All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the February 4th regular Board of Supervisors meeting. Call this meeting to order. I think I might have said that. I don't remember. But we're going to start off with our moment of silence. I know that one of our colleagues has a moment of silence. Does anyone else as well? Or, okay, Brad, did you want to?
You do too?
Yeah, kind of.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This morning, I wanted to ask the board and the public to join us in a moment of silence for Vicente Colasion, who was murdered this past Friday night at Library Park here in Lakeport, just a short distance from here. Vicente is a member of our community. He leaves behind a lot of friends and family members. He was also active in the local poetry community. And it's just a sad situation that we had that violence this past Friday, and Vicente lost his life. So we want to honor and remember him. There will also be a remembrance for him at the Middletown Arts Center this Friday night at 6:30, and then a candlelight vigil for him at Library Park on Saturday at 7:30. So, thank you.
I just, thank you. I just wanted to remember the people that we lost in DC in the plane accident, as well as Philadelphia. And I know that Jessica had mentioned before the burn victim, or the people that lost their lives in the fires in Los Angeles. So I'm kind of glad January is over. Thank you.
Julia, could you lead us in the pledge, please? Julia Carrera, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. All right. Item number four, consideration of extra items that are not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any?
No, we do not, sir.
All right. Item five, approval of the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is passed for non-controversial items. However, anyone from the Board of Supervisors can pull, or someone from the public. So we'll start off with the board. Does anybody have any to pull? All right, I'll open it up for the public. Is there anyone that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? On Zoom? All right. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries 5-0. All right. Next, we have item 6.1, which is public input. And if there's anyone, I have one here. But just to explain, public input is here for anyone that wants to speak for three minutes on something that's not on the agenda. And so if you want to speak, you get three minutes. State your name for the record. And just know that we cannot comment on the public input at the time. However, we will work to get you in touch with someone that can address what you're discussing at a later time, or something of the like. So what I'll do is start off with Carolyn Jarrett. If you're here, you want to start out and come up and conduct your public input?
Sorry, I'm short. Good morning. My name is Carolyn Jarrett. I'm a retired teacher. I worked for 18 years in the elementary school Burns Valley in Pomona. I retired and served eight years on the Conackdai School Board. All of this experience has given me a compelling picture of the obstacles and challenges to success that many of our students are facing. At a meeting of the retired teachers of Lake County Division 35 last May, we heard a presentation from Julie McGovern, Director of the Mendocino College Adopt a Fifth Grader Program. And I have to tell you, it gave me great hope. The retired teachers wanted to make a donation then and there, but I said, whoa. Because our county is served by two different community colleges, the Mendocino College program only serves schools in Lucerne, Upper Lake, Lakeport, and Kelseyville. And I wanted to see if there was a program that served Conackdai and Middletown. So I did some research over the summer and found Jay Loudon, the Director of the Yuba College Adopt a Fifth Grader Program. So before I go any further, I'd like to tell you the backstory, because it really underscores the purpose of these programs. It all started in Oklahoma in the summer of 1947, when an ambitious young man named Wade Koninger was mowing lawns. One of his clients was so impressed with his hard work and hustle that he got him a scholarship to Yale. You could do that back then. Once he was out of Yale, Wade had a very successful career in business and ultimately retired to Hopland. But he never forgot the extra leg up that that scholarship gave him, and how grateful and indebted he was to having that opportunity. In 2007, he gave money to the Mendocino Foundation, a nonprofit associated with Mendocino College, to offer scholarships to fifth graders, because Wade felt that the goal should start earlier than the teenage years. The Adopt a Fifth Grader Program was born. It works like this. At the end-of-year assemblies, fifth graders are chosen by their teachers and principals. They are given a $25 gift certificate right then, and then another certificate that promises that if they graduate from high school, they will receive $500. However, if they enroll and take 12 units at Mendocino College, they'll receive $1,000. The students who are chosen are not necessarily the top of the class. They are those who might not be motivated in school due to difficult circumstances, but who show promise. They might be the first in their families to go to graduate and go to college. They might just need to be recognized and supported and given the chance to have a dream. Julie says that 50% of her students do go on to college. Mendocino College has been running this program for 17 years. Yuba College started only two years ago. It takes $700 to fund each scholarship, but donations of any amount are gratefully accepted. Is that my time?
Are you close to wrapping up?
Okay. All right. Well, I'll skip this other part. There's two. I know the supervisors cannot allocate money for this program, but I know that most of you are members of charitable groups, animal clubs, or other organizations. Both Jay and Julie have said they are very willing to come to speak to any group in Lake County to hear about their programs. I'm hoping that we, as a community, will step up and support this program for our youth. Thank you so much for your time. And as a good teacher, of course, I have handouts, and I'm not going to give them to you until I'm through speaking. So it's a flyer from both Yuba and Mendocino, and then my phone number on the front, if you have any ideas of other groups that I might speak to. I would appreciate it if you would contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If there's anyone else, I think, I see Gail. Would you like to come up?
Yes, thank you.
And there's some paper. There's a paper. It's a request form. I don't know if you've already filled it out, but if not, just fill it out and...
Thank you.
And one hand on the side. Hold on.
Okay.
Shall I fill it out after I speak?
Yes, yeah, you can do that.
Good morning. My name is Gail Delane, and I'm a resident of, or homeowner, at Lake Village Estates Mobile Home Park for seniors. We are here this morning, many of us, to ask supervisors to consider, and to help us more than consider, come up with a rent stabilization ordinance, a rent stabilization ordinance for mobile home parks throughout Lake County. Sonoma County has done this, and they have, I'll just read this part. The rent shall not exceed 70%, a 70% change in the Consumer Price Index, or 4% of the previous year's rent, whichever is less. Our owner, mobile home park owner, has also imposed pass-through charges. So anything that they do in the park to enhance their park, they charge us for. They pass charges through to us monthly, along with our space rent. We are homeowners with all the obligations of homeowners. We pay insurance. Some people have loans, mortgage loans on their homes. We pay our water, our sewer, our taxes, our landscape, PG&E, gas, and trash pickup. So we're just, we really would like the supervisors to consider an ordinance that would help parks throughout, throughout Lake County. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Gail, I'll follow up with you later.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chambers? And just fill out a paper, like, Gail.
Okay. John Martin from Clear Lake Oaks, Lake Village Estates. We, I'm here just for the rent control, and I think there should be a freeze on how many years they can charge us. Say, you know, two years. Every two years, rent can go up, and this, for seniors, we really need a lower percent, because our social security doesn't pay us enough to live in life. So these corporations are destroying people's lives. And we really need this rent control, so that we can live happily, or at least live the rest of our lives in comfort. So we really need this rent control. What else? I know they, this corporation, they're violating a lot of laws, trying to get us, they're extorting money from us, basically is what they're doing. And we really need the law to come on there. They, right now, I've already found one law from the Health and Safety Code, which is 18603, that they are violating. There's a lot of them that they violate, even the mobile home park laws. We are filing complaints with the state, and we would like to ask the county to, you know, step up, go investigate Boavita, because they, apparently, they have a business here. You guys are in charge of their business license. They should be following your laws, and you guys should be in there stopping them from breaking the law. That's about it. I don't have any more. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, board. My name is Chris Allen. I'm a resident of Lakeport. Thank you Supervisor Rasmussen for mentioning Vicente's candlelight vigil. I'd also like to thank local law enforcement agencies for their hard work in apprehending the suspects in the case very quickly. Vicente was a larger-than-life character that made friends everywhere he went. He saw the beauty in everyone. You could hardly ever have a conversation with him where he wouldn't say something you said or did was beautiful. He was brutally honest, many times to a fault, and he was an amazing person that will be greatly missed. Several members of the public, with the blessing of Vicente's family, are organizing the candlelight vigil at Library Park at the gazebo at 7:30. I have the honor of informing the board and the public, inviting them to this event. The outpour from the community has already been tremendous. Please come to support his family, and for those that knew him, be ready to share or listen to a story from, about Vicente. Everyone that's met him has at least one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Crandall, board, and staff. My name is Julia Carrera. I'm here representing the Upper Lake Community Services District Formation Committee regarding the recent email you received on dangerous condition of public property, inverse condemnation, and CEASA liability. The same day that letter went out, which was copied to 24 different agencies, we did receive immediately a positive response from the Army Corps of Engineers. We hope we will be receiving a similar positive response from the county. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the chambers? On Zoom? Okay. Donna, if you would like to unmute?
Good morning, board. Donna McWitz, District III, registered voter and volunteer member of the General Plan and Shoreline Local Area Plan Advisory Committees. Thank you, board, for your dedication and service. And I'd like to share my opinion and concern that Lake County sheriffs can't respond timely for hours in emergencies in Clear Lake Oaks, as we saw again in High Valley last Monday. Two individuals walked up to a home for help, covered in blood, needing immediate attention. Sheriffs were called, 911, and they responded. They couldn't help for hours. The two young adults were transported to the hospital, but it wasn't again for another two days until the third individual was found deceased. What was originally thought to be a mountain lion attack was a failed traffic accident. Fish and wildlife had been called, and they responded even before our sheriffs. Please consider halting all projects in High Valley until the safety in travel and visiting the area, safety can be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom? All right, with that, we will close public input and move on to our next timed item, Pet of the Week.
Hello, I am Gabrielle Reel. I am an officer at Animal Control, and this is Lucy. Lucy is a fun and very energetic girl, as you can see. She would make you a wonderful hiking, adventure companion, anything like that. She is fully vaccinated, spayed, ready to go to a loving, forever home. Unfortunately, she is on our at-risk list due to a high population in the shelter. We do recommend that she goes to a little more of an experienced home, just because of her higher energy. And if you guys would like to say hi to Lucy, I can walk around with her.
I think she is a puppy.
How old is Lucy?
Um, about a year, I believe.
About a year?
Yeah. Yeah, you can sit right up top. She'll grab it later. Thank you. All right.
After 1:30, he can make it.
Oh, okay.
He's not aware.
Okay, we can do that. All right. Thank you for that. All right, next, we'll move on to our 6.3, 9:05, or yeah, 9:05, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of February 2025 Black History Month and Celebrating Martin Luther King Jr.'s Birthday. And Supervisor Sabatier has touched base with, you, go ahead.
Right now, yeah.
Touched base with Rick Mayo, who would like to do it after 1:00. He can be here after 1:00 at a later time.
Yeah, he said he can make it here at 1:30. I told him we have an item at 1:00, and that if the chair allows it, we'll take it after the 1:00 PM.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. So we'll push that back.
Thank you.
6.4, our 9:07, Presentation of Proclamation Honoring Phil Kirby on 51 Eventful Years in Education, 47 in Lake County. And so Vice Sheriff Rasmussen, this is your proclamation.
So this past December, Phil retired from his last job in education, which was a member of the Lakeport Unified School District Board of Trustees. Over the past three and a half decades, I've worked with Phil numerous times, interacted on, on a lot of activities that interfaced with the school. And with over 50 years in education, I felt it was deserving of a proclamation to recognize that. So with that, we'll go with the proclamation. This is a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake, State of California, honoring Phil Kirby on 51 eventful years in education, 47 of those in Lake County. Whereas, learning has been a lifelong love for Phil Kirby, who earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in English in 1971 at Sacramento State University, and went on to attain a Master's Degree in Educational Administration at the University of San Francisco. degree in Educational Administration at the University of San Francisco in 1980. And whereas, Phil Kirby, Phil began his teaching career at Sacramento's Holy Spirit School and then moved to Pittsburgh Unified, where he established an innovative community school program for expelled high school students throughout the district, transforming the course of many lives. And whereas, in 1978, Phil brought his substantial skill and energy to Lake County, California, providing strong leadership at Upper Lake Union High School and Lower Lake Unified School Districts for nearly a decade. And whereas, in 1987, he joined the Lake County Office of Education and spent 20 years spearheading programs, supporting students facing pivotal life experiences. Phil was the Director of a Community and Court School for Lake County Students and Pregnant Minor Program as well. He also served as Director of Child Welfare and Attendants, established the Countywide School Attendants Review Board, facilitated crisis intervention, intervention prevention courses, and was highly valued in the County Emergency Preparedness Team. Whereas, Phil retired from teaching in 2007, but did not leave the education field, become a member of the Lakeport Unified School District Board of Trustees and the North Coast Section of California Intersilastic Federation Board of Managers. And whereas, during his 51 years in education, he was a beacon of light to many thousands of students and their families and his dedication to those who most needed, a caring word and supportive hand, will continue to bear fruit in life of Lake County families and communities for many generations to come. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby honor and thank Phil Kirby for his five decades of exemplary service to the people of Lake County and the State of California and wishes him exquisite joy, contentment, and renewal in retirement, passed this Fourth Day of February 2025. Signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, E.J. Crandall. Congratulations, Phil. And before we go to comments from the Board, I'm going to invite Luca Moretti from Congressman Thompson's office, who also has a presentation related to Phil.
Of course. Sure. So when Vice Chair Rasmussen told me about your service and that you would be honored today, we really wanted to make sure, and Congressman Thompson wanted to make sure, that we honored your public service and your service to the students of Lake County, the fact that you've changed countless lives through the transformative power of education with a Congressional Record Statement. This has been read into the Congressional Record, meaning that your work will be part of the Congressional Record for the future of the entire nation. I wanted to present you with this today, signed by Congressman Thompson.
Did you want to say anything, Phil? Yeah.
You know, I don't want to keep everybody, but thank you, first of all. Secondly, I wouldn't have done any of this, for how long I've done it, if it hadn't been for the kids. My heart has always been out there for them. Sometimes these kids were known as throwaway children, but they don't go away. And so I just tried to open my doors and my heart and be there for them. I also want to thank my wife Nancy and my kids Rachel and Nate for their support. And Brad, thank you very much. I'm deeply, deeply honored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from the Board?
I think what's said has been said. Greatly appreciate your service, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You had mentioned Nate, your son? I played against him in high school. Upper Lake always had a hard time with Clear Lake students, so, playing, you know, sports, so, but no, just thank you for all you've done for Lake County and especially Clear Lake High School. Anyone else from the public like to come up? Okay.
Has to be lower. Hi, I'm Carolyn Jarrett. Well, not only do I know Phil from his days in Conacta, he used to be a sub-principal after he left our district, but he was also on the SAR Board. But the thing is, when Phil was around, everybody knew, the teachers and the kids, somebody is in charge. And Phil has a demeanor which says, "I'm in charge," and everybody knew it. And the thing is, it was with, like he shows you today, is with compassion and open ears and an open heart. And the Phil, Phil, the thing is, we were just always so excited when you came on our campus, for any reason, but we just really loved having you and have a great deal of respect for you and thank you so much for coming and serving with us. And the, and I especially remember taking kids to the SAR Board when you were there and it was a no-nonsense deal. You know, the parents would try to weasel and try to whatever and you would like call them to task. It would be firm, it would be gentle, but people knew that we were, you were here to solve the problem and let's get right on it. And that, that was really, gave me great hope about, you know, that something can be done when we're so frustrated trying to deal with these families. But the kids and the parents knew, we're here to solve the problem and that's the demeanor that you showed. And so I really have so much respect for you, Phil, and I thank you so much, so.
Rob Brown. I was very fortunate, we hear these things and we talk about these things, but to actually witness it is something quite different. I was on the School Attendants Review Board back in 1994, when I first met Phil. And he, he had this commanding presence. He walked into the room and he was in charge, like Carolyn said. But the thing that I had noticed more than anything was, the kids that were there were never afraid of him. They were glad that he was there because he was holding the parents to task. And I can remember distinctly a few times, but one in particular, eight-year-old kid, the mom's and the dad, "Can't get him out of bed, I can't get him dressed, I can't get him this." And Phil looked at them, he goes, "Who's the parent here? Who's in charge? Does that kid drive himself to school? No, does not. You're in charge, you're the one responsible." And, and that was the way it went, you know, it was always hold the person to task, people responsible for not getting these kids in and make sure they get in there. And there are literally thousands of kids, and they're adults now, that probably wouldn't be where they are were it not for Phil. And I'm proud to have witnessed that myself, so thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Rob. I appreciate it.
All right, we'll close public input and I think we got to do a picture.
Sorry.
I'll take one first because we got to put it on our social media. I'm never in that. That's the rule. It's not about me, it's about the. I'll get in there for you.
Oh, I can't see everybody.
Are we all in this picture or?
I'm blocking you. I'll move over.
Is this better?
Yeah, that looks better. Okay, so everybody's smiling because I can't see. Okay, let me just do it one more time. There. Oh, yay, we did it. How nice. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Wow, this is something else here.
Thank you, Brad.
All right. All right. All right, so we'll move on to our 6.5, Consideration of A, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 2024-99 to amend the FY fiscal year 2024-2025 adopted budget by adjusting reserves, fund balance, carryover, revenues, and appropriations. And B, Resolution Amending Resolution 2024-100 to amend the position allocations for fiscal year 2024-25 to conform to the mid-year budget adjustments. And I'll give the floor, it looks like Casey.
Good morning, Casey Murnau, Deputy County Minister of Officer for Finance and Budget. So there are quite a few minor changes to the budget, but I am going to go over a few of the highlights. So for reserve adjustments, the cannabis program, district attorney asset forfeiture, roads, welfare assistance, and various of the special districts budgets are being adjusted. For revenues in Budget Unit 1785 Public Safety Facilities, we're requesting to accept $125,000 for the MITRIP grant and to be used for the design and construction of OES Culver. And $2.5 million from the bond to be used for the armory remodel. And note on that, we did get $20 million for the bond, or it's closing tomorrow, but we're only budgeting $2.5 for this fiscal year in addition to what was already budgeted. For Budget Unit 8109 Watershed Protection District, we're requesting to accept $981,407 for the MITRIP grant to be used for the Sonic Water Quality Buoy Project. For the appropriations in Budget Unit 1011 for the Board of Supervisors, requesting additional general fund in the amount of $53,500 to cover increased salary and benefit costs. For the auditor in Budget Unit 1121, request to increase budget in the amount of $1 million for the ERP Workday Conversion. Budget Unit 1122 for Treasurer Tax Collector, request to transfer funds in the amount of $5,000 for the necessary upgrade for RevQ and the court and county collection system. Social Services Administration, Budget Unit 5011, request transfer funds in the amount of $200,000 for the NCO Child Care and $189,880 for the Transia Adolescent Youth Program. For Budget Unit 8799 Air Quality Management District, request to transfer funds in the amount of $25,000 for hiring bonus implementation. And there are various position allocation changes for the Assessor, Department of Public Works, Engineering and Inspection, Public Defender, Probation, Planning, Health Services Administration, Mental Health, and Alcohol and Other Drugs. And then for the capital asset list, there are some changes to current existing allocations and a few new, which are also reported in the appropriations. You have any questions?
All right, so any questions from the Board? Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, I just have a comment about the adjustments for the Board's salary because we did tie it to the judges' salaries set by the state. I would like to bring that back for another conversation so that we could align it more closely with the increases that staff are getting, maybe potentially a ceiling or a cap or something, just, you know, it's a new way of doing things and I think a little bit more tweaking would be appropriate.
Sure.
If there's consensus for that.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I'm okay with bringing that conversation back to figure out how to make that happen. One of the comments that I had made was, when we get a raise and others don't, but I have been keeping track with HR, I think it's actually matched pretty closely to what the MOUs that we have with our unions. It may be a flip, two and three, rather than three and two, or something like that, but it wasn't something that was extraordinarily out of range, but it can be. And so we need to, I think, be more transparent when it happens. I appreciate that it's on the mid-year review and I've been meaning to make a mention of that during my comments and just haven't made those comments, but I think it's something that we should say on an annual basis, what has been the increase, if we keep it attached to that, rather than it being silent. I just want to share appreciation with the time staff spent with me. I had a few questions, appreciate what it is that I'm seeing. There are some concerns, not concerns in the mid-year budget, just concern of the uncertainty of a lot of federal dollars that typically has been relied on to come down from the federal government, where right now it's kind of up in flux and it's, it's just a really unknown until further notice. But I do know there's, there's some major cuts being proposed, again, unknown, regarding our human services. So that would be public health, social services, and behavioral health. I don't know that it needs to happen now, but I know that I did receive an email from our public health officer asking if we had a strategy on how to deal with continuing to provide the best services that our community needed, while still looking at what can be cut and what should be cut first, because it's not a, it's not a simple process. And so I just want to put it out there that I think that strategic planning should probably start sooner than later and I hope that there's consensus from the Board that we need to be, not ahead, but we need to be prepared and not reacting once it's done, or else it may be too late for us to really be able to pivot. There was one question I just had real quick, specifically to the Public Defender's Office, there's an increase from 16 to 19 in reviewing the budget. There's a lot of funding that's placed in the professional services and contracts. From my, my understanding, we're supposed to be pulling money from that line item, or is there enough in the salaries to be able to increase it to 19 at this moment in time?
Right now, there is enough salary savings in the salary already because they haven't filled all their positions, so it's okay for right now, but we might do a budget transfer later on and we would pull it from there.
And so what the anticipation would be is without the concept of an increase or a decrease in the budget for next fiscal year, that will seal a decrease in the professional services and contracts, because now we anticipate that this will be a constant position that will be filled, since we're going from 16 to 19?
If they can fill all their positions.
Okay, okay. And again, did a review between the Public Defender's Office and the District Attorney's Office, just to look at the parity. We're not necessarily close to parity and I don't know if there's certain things, like they have welfare investigators and other things, I don't know if that goes within the Public Defender's purview, but I was trying to take a look and it's, it's not out of context as to what we're doing. So I just wanted to at least bring it up, ask about where the money was coming from, if it was still doable with what was there, because I didn't see any changes in the adjustments and just wanted to at least speak on that. So, thank you.
Vice Chair?
Yes, I have similar concerns about the Board of Supervisors salaries, so I'm definitely in agreement with bringing that back to further discuss.
Looks like we have a consensus on that. All right. Any other comments from the Board? Hearing none, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment about the budget? Anyone on Zoom? We will bring it back to the Board for action. And all we would be looking for is offering the resolution.
Mr. Chair, I offer the Resolution Amending Resolution Number 2024-99 to amend fiscal year 24-25 adopted budget.
Resolution has been offered.
Okay. Supervisor Owen?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Rasmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Do we need to do B?
Mr. Chair, I offer the Resolution Amending Resolution 2024-100 to amend the position allocation for fiscal year 24-25.
Resolution has been offered.
Okay. Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Rasmussen? Supervisor Rasmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
All right, both of those resolutions pass. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
All right. Our next timed item is at 10, so it looks like we'll go ahead and cover a couple of non-timed items, one being B. We'll start with consideration of following advisory appointments, 7.4. Let me get to that item on here, so, and, all right, 7.4. Consideration of following Advisory Board appointments, Big Valley Advisory Council, Emergency Medical Care Council, Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, Lake County Resources Conservation District, Middletown Area Town Hall, and Middletown Cemetery District. Are there anyone from the board that wants to make a comment or discuss the appointments? And we'll, do we, we'll start from the top and go down? All right. So it looks like we're going to start with, one second, please, just pulling this up. All right. Here's the memo, and we will go on and start with Big Valley Advisory Council. There's three vacancies and one applicant.
Yeah, Arno Huber, he applied before and is happy to step in and fill one of the vacancies. We do have another application that's going to be coming in hopefully next week.
We already actually have it, but it
Didn't quite make the agenda.
Didn't make the agenda, it will be here next week.
Okay, yeah, so I think he'd be a great fit for that committee.
Comments from the board? Open it up for public input. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment about this appointment? Hearing or seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
I move that we appoint Arno Huber to the Big Valley Advisory.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about the sound.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, 5-0-0. Emergency Medical Care Council, there are three vacancies, and it looks like we have three, yeah, we have three applications, looks like they're incumbents, so it'd be a reappointment.
Yeah, key component of the EMCC, all three of them, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Captain Doughty's in Kelseyville, I think he's great. Definitely keep Dr. Bloom and, of course, Chief Sepeda, so I'm in favor of all three.
All right, if there's no other comments, if you have another comment?
No.
Okay. I'll open it up for the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to discuss these appointments? Not seeing or hearing any, we'll move on, move it back to the board, close public input, and look for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Evan Bloom, James Doughty, Willie Sepeda to the EMCC Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, all right. Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, three vacancies, it looks like we have one application for Greg Juisty. Did I pronounce it right? Okay, good.
He has agreed to do it again, so we are very grateful that Mr. Juisty continues to want to participate in fish and wildlife.
All right. Any other comments from the board?
Thanks for twisting his arm.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this appointment? Not hearing or seeing any, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint Greg Juisty to Fish and Wildlife for the education seat.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed and motion carries, 5-0-0. Next, we have the Lake County Resource Conservation District, and we have one vacancy and an incumbent position, I think, let me see, hold on, I
Yeah, actually, she was, we had a resignation, but she has been on it before, and that's Kate Schmidt Hopper, and I move that we, we go ahead and accept her on to the Conservation District one.
All right, one second, let me open it up for the public first, and then we'll, we'll go back to that. Is there anyone from the public?
Hi, my name's Mary Jo Velazquez, I'm the District Four Director for the Resource Conservation District, and Kate Schmidt Hopper is an essential part of our board, she's the Vice President. An example of her initiative is she organizes field days in the creeks for fourth graders in Middletown. I have these incredible thank you notes that they sent her, they were so enthused by, and it's, it's a huge job. I do the one in Middle Creek Camp round, and mine is so simple compared to what she does, she's really important, thank you.
Good morning, I'm Harry Lyons, the past president of the Lake County Resource Conservation District, and I'm here to support the application of Kate Schmidt Hopper to continue on our board. Kate, as Mary Jo said, is in charge of the field days in the creek where fourth graders, 100 of them, get to see professional resource people. It's important when you're in fourth grade to know that you don't have to end up with a college professor, a supervisor, or a capital investor, any type, you can work outside. And so these fourth graders meet through Kate's direction, through a bullhorn managing them around, geologists and fisheries biologists and foresters and also firefighters, and so it's a, it's a great day. And, and I do the, I do the paperwork and Kate does the groundwork. She also is involved with our scholarship program, the Meisenbach Scholarship, for people who want to pursue college work or other, other schoolwork in, in forestry, fire science, and other natural resource work. So she is our Vice President, and she has been instrumental, as have all of us, in this huge expansion in your RCD. So two years ago, we had a budget of half a million dollars, and now we have quadrupled that. We had six part-time employees, and now we have 13 employees, four of them which are full-time. So she's been involved with, with that success. I want to thank you for appointing two new directors. We look forward to meeting Mr. Barron and Mr. Campbell, and they will be greeted with open arms, and those arms will be full of material for them to study to join our working board. So we're delighted, and bottom line is, I wish you to act in such a way as a holy cow, bring our Vice President back to us, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Lyons.
Yeah, I, I just want to add that I am incredibly grateful to the work that the RCD's been doing over the last couple of years. This expansion is just a massive game changer for all of these projects, particularly around wildfire mitigation, that we're finally being able to accomplish in the county, so thank you, Dr. Lyons. And I'm happy to second Supervisor
I haven't closed public input yet.
Oh, sorry.
Anyone else would like to go up and speak on this, or anyone on Zoom? All right, now I'll close public input, it looks like I have a motion, Supervisor Owen, and a second from Supervisor Pyska. And so I'll take the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. All right, now we will move on to the Middletown Area Town Hall, and it looks like we have three vacancies and three applications. And Supervisor Owen, are, you have any comments about this since it's your municipal advisory committee?
Nope, I'm, I'm excited about them, they'll do a great job.
All right. I'll open it up to the public, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item, this appointment? Not hearing any, I'll bring it back to the board, closing public input, and looking for action.
Okay, I'm going to move that we appoint Charles Morris, Monica Rosenthal, and Tara Ubera to the Math Board for Middletown.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Lastly, we'll do the Middletown Cemetery District, we have
We think would be ideal. Let's try 7.2.
All right, 7.2. Consideration of a Letter of Support for the Cumulative Health Impacts of Cascading Environmental Hazards on Rural Communities Project. And B, Consideration of the Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and Tribal Liaison Serving on Community Advisory Board of the Project. It looks like we have Terry Logstine.
Good morning, Quinn Conklin is on the Zoom call, if you want to promote her to panelist. Thank you, Board. Terry Logstine, Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and Tribal Liaison, I'm bringing to you a letter of support for this project which has been ongoing in Lake County for some time. The overarching goal is to identify and mitigate the cumulative mental and physical health impacts of cascading environmental hazards on rural communities facing significant health challenges. This project, I would participate in by assessing and providing feedback on research and progress every six months, as well as others on the advisory board, joining project conference calls or advising as research questions arise, and providing insight on the integration of the project's findings and outputs with ongoing efforts in Lake County for a total commitment of about 12 hours of per year for the next five years for myself. And since this was posted, I've continued communications with them, and they have one amendment to the letter, which Johanna has, and I will hand her, so in the Okay, yeah. Thank you so much. They have room in their budget to compensate the Office of Climate Resiliency, it wouldn't necessarily be for my, you know, exact time, and they want to add in the grant application up to $10,000 per year. And so that's the change that's in the letter of support, and if you have any questions, Quinn is on the line.
Supervisor Pyska?
Oh, and just one other thing, also participating in, on the advisory board and in the project includes Hope Rising and Adventist Health with Lori Allen and Ronnie Duncan, Partnership Health with Vicky Clacken and Jeff Robordi, our OES Leah Sotole, Behavioral Health, Elise Jones, and probably Pastor Kimbaloth with Red Cross, but she's deployed in LA and hasn't been able to respond.
Yeah, so before we open it up to our speaker, I just wanted to say, you know, we are always talking about the cumulative effects of all these disasters on our community members, we know everyone's been evacuated, we know everyone has to deal with smoke and the heat domes and the heat events and the flooding, and, and it, it wears very heavily on our population. The people in Lake County have been through a lot, and, and this is a way for us to quantify that with data so that we can start looking for the resources to assist, because we know that these are, these are issues that are only multiplying, and, and it's just, it's a part of our life now, and so we need to figure out how we can support our, our residents in a way that, you know, will help promote, promote their well-being when we're faced with these difficult circumstances. So I'm grateful that we've got some research and we can finally get the data to quantify that.
Any other comments from the board? And, okay, go ahead.
Let's go ahead.
Okay, do you want to speak, ma'am?
Yes, thank you for having me. I'm not entirely sure how long I have, so I will give you a very brief overview, and if you have questions, I'm happy to stay as long as it takes to answer those. And so my name is Quinn Conklin, I am a member of the research group, but I am also a former resident of Middletown and someone who's family lost their home in the valley fire, so all of this is particularly close to my heart. And the goal of the project is to build on work that this team has already been doing in the area for the last four to five years, documenting and monitoring continuing climate and environmental hazards post wildfires, and, and linking those cumulative effects to ongoing mental and physical health consequences in the area. And there are several community involvement tasks built into the design of the proposal, and the, the ultimate goal is to build several tools for predicting and monitoring ongoing hazards. So we will be using historical data, both from the health field and environmental data, and linking those to try to assess the cumulative impacts of the multiple layers of hazards on different health outcomes, and then to build a simulation tool that allows Lake County decision-makers to make predictions about what health outcomes might be most impacted by particular environmental hazards. And then there is a full year built in at the end of the grant to share that tool and train people in its use, and particularly healthcare workers and emergency response folks. So I'll pause there if you have any further questions.
Supervisor Spatier?
Now, I was just going to mention that I appreciate the added information of who else will be on there, because when it just had your name on it, I was a little confused as to what you would be able to bring in other than the knowledge that things have occurred. This is not a prediction of events, this is a aftermath of what affects events have on people. So I'm glad that you mentioned the whole group so that it's a more cross-section of individuals that can provide all that information to accumulate. I don't know what the end goal is, I'm happy to give support. Obviously, there's impacts, we do our pick count, and we ask if people are experiencing homelessness and because of fires, we ask them which fire? So we know the aftermath, and unless there's dollars at the end of this rainbow, this will tell us most likely what we already know, which is there is a physical and mental impact, we've seen it, we've experienced it. So hopefully, there will be some dollars that we can use, but today, I'll go ahead and say yes.
All right, if there's no other comments from the board, I'll open it up to the public. No one on Zoom? All right, close public input, and bring it back to the board for action.
Sorry, I didn't have it open. Okay. Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Letter of Support for the Cumulative Health Impacts of Cascading Environmental Hazards on Rural Communities.
As amended.
As amended? Authorize the chair to sign?
All right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
B, Consideration of the Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and Tribal Liaison Serving on Community Advisory Board of the Project.
I have a quick question before I second that. Today, we are talking very specifically about Ms. Logstine's involvement. All of the others have already agreed, or are we kind of also pushing them into a advisory board by, with all the names that have been put out?
That's a good question, I don't have the answer to that.
I can clarify that. Elise Jones has submitted a letter, the Office of Emergency Services have submitted their own letter, and Hope Rising is providing their letter today as well. And, and as Terry mentioned, we've been in communication with Pastor Shannon, but have not confirmed her letter because of the deployment at the moment, and we are also waiting for approval from Partnership Health as well. So some of the letters are expected to come today, but we do have commitments from Behavioral Health, Hope Rising, and the Office of Emergency Services.
And I appreciate that you mentioned the letter from Behavioral Health, because that's really the only one that I just didn't want to impose without, if they already volunteered themselves, then at this point, I don't feel like I'm imposing, so second.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I may, just for further clarification, that would be the motion to approve the Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and Tribal Liaison to serve on the Community Advisory Board of the Project.
Yes.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
And we will entertain a break before we hit 10, the 10 o'clock item. So we'll be back here at, we'll say 10:07, all right. All right.
If I can participate.
Tom Robinson, Dick Nielsen.
All right. So we're gonna come back to order here and start on our 6.6, which is consideration and discussion of the broadband implementation plan and update on broadband initiatives. And we have Ben Rickleman here to give that.
Good morning, Board. Ben Rickleman, Deputy County Administrative Officer. Thankfully, there's now significant movement in the broadband space, so I'm gonna provide several updates on different broadband initiatives. And then the county's broadband consultant, CBG Communications, will join us to discuss the county's broadband implementation plan, which was completed at the end of last year. We do have a lot of slides, so I'm gonna speak somewhat quick, but if you want to ask a question or clarification, feel free to. So this is just an overview of the different initiatives. How do I do it? Yeah. So the first initiative is the statewide Middle Mile Broadband Network. So this is an open access broadband network. Think of it kind of as the broadband highway that companies and nonprofit and the public sector can interconnect with. So six miles have been constructed in Lake County so far, from the Lake-Napa border down to Middletown, and then there's about 83 and a half miles left. It's transitioned from a pure Caltrans project to a joint project with a private company, American Dark Fiber. So they are wrapping up the permitting right now, and they plan to begin construction on the rest of it in 2025, and we anticipate it to finish in either 2026 or 2027. This is a map of it. The orange is the sections that have been completed, and then the blue is what's planned.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. So are those people that have been connected, are they, do they have service now? The pieces in yellow?
No. So I don't believe any of the section of this part of the state's active right now. And so this will kind of be in the future. We could see some fixed wireless ISPs connect to it. And then there's also a consortium through RCRC called the Golden State Connect Authority. So they're planning to build an open access broadband network that will offer several different ISPs, so drive competition and price. And they're gonna offer, or their plan is to kind of build out that service connected to the middle mile. So the middle mile doesn't go directly to anyone's house. It's kind of the level above that. It's, if you think of it kind of the highway, and then there has to be the individual roads to residents and businesses.
Okay, now, one more question. Does that start at the county line, so it takes care of the southern port of District One, or does it start at the casino?
It goes all the way to the Napa border.
Okay, thank you.
So this is the next program. This is, it's called the Federal Funding Account. It's through the Public Utility Commission. Lake County has about $28.4 million allocated. So this program is to individual residences, and this will actually be the first broadband in the county that's actual fiber to the residents. MediaCom at the moment is fiber to the neighborhood node and then copper, so that will have greater reliability. And last Thursday, the CPUC voted to award three projects to Lake County out of this allocation for, in total, about $14.6 million. So one of the AT&amp;T projects is in District One. The MediaCom project is in District Three and Four. Spring Valley is one of the areas, and then there's some in North Lakeport, Big Valley, and Finley. And then there's another AT&amp;T project that's in District Five, in Cobb, and a few other areas. And so there's about $13.8 million still to be allocated, so there should be subsequent rounds of FFA awards. So this is the pricing plan for MediaCom. So they do have lower income. To qualify for that, you have to be at least, 200% of the federal poverty level are, are lower. And then the other, the market rate plans are there. These are locked in for five years. This is the MediaCom service area for the FFA project. And then this shows the grant amount, estimate number of unserved households, and they define unserved as currently having broadband service lower than 25 megabytes per seven, per second download and 3 megabytes per second upload. And then the grant per unit. This is the pricing plan for AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T also has a lower income price level. That's also the 200% of the federal poverty level. And then those are the different market rate plans that are available. So this is the one in District One. Again, the project information. And then this is the one in District Five. The project information. The next program is to also the CPUC. This is the State Digital Equity Capacity Subgrant. So there's around 341,000 allocated for Lake County. It's not specific to Lake County government, but we do plan on applying for it when it becomes available. We'll probably partner with other entities in the county. So this is more kind of providing workforce development, providing access to skills. It could be devices and libraries and senior centers. So we have to wait for the scope of what the program entails to kind of develop a response. We did apply last year directly to the NTIA federal opportunity for about 7.1 million in federal funding. We partnered with the county library, Hopa Matopuma of Upper Lake and Mendocino College. So that was a combination of workforce development and then devices and facility improvements for the library that was focused on digital literacy. So the big program in the pipeline still is BEED. California has been allocated roughly $1.86 billion, and this, they kind of have a pyramid of prioritization. So it's, at the top priority is providing service to unserved households, then underserved households, and then community, what they call community anchor institutions, which is basically any community facility and workforce development. So they estimate there's about 300,000 unserved households still in California. So again, that's that 25 and 3. And I mean, 1.86 billion is a large number, but if you were to do like a subsidy of 12,000 per household times 300,000, that's about three times as that. So we'll see what happens. So there's gonna be, ISPs are gonna be bidding for qualified areas, and then the CPUC is gonna determine those awards. That's how the program's structured right now, and we would find out where those are awarded, late summer, early fall, and then they would put out the awards early Q4 of 2025. And CBG will talk a little bit more. There's certain what they call high cost areas, so they, the geographic areas ISPs will bid on for this funding is census block groups. So there's some formula with topography, remoteness, population density, and income level, and if it reaches these thresholds, then there's no match required. And Lake County has about five or six of those census block groups. So I know you can't really read this, but I just put it up here. This is where they are, the states are in the BEED approval process, so California's still in the first column. But we should, the CPUC said they will be done with their challenge map this month, so that shows really narrowing in where it's truly unserved households throughout the state. So there's a lot of back and forth on that. So this is just more detail from the CPUC regarding the timeframe for BEED. And kind of the big things is the challenge mount this month, late August, regarding what they call subgrantees, which are basically ISPs where they're applying for the BEED money, and then finalized at the, in October to the federal government for the funding. Now I'm gonna turn it over to CBG Communications, who is the county's broadband consultant to talk over the implementation plan.
Okay, thank you, Ben, and appreciate the opportunity to talk with everyone today. With me is Dick Nielsen from our St. Paul office. Dick is our senior engineer, and he'll be handling some of the slides, especially when we talk about broadband deployment and availability. Okay, next slide, please. So we developed an implementation plan, which was a follow-on project to the master broadband plan update. And if you remember that, that was issued in September of 2023, and was an update of a plan that had been developed four years earlier in 2019, and it was also based on some information even earlier than that, in 2017, and was obviously pre-pandemic, where a lot of things changed. And of course, the focus of the federal government with the NTIA and the FCC was on, based on... the problems, especially rural areas were having this broadband access during the pandemic. Really focused on starting to provide funding for deployment and provide funding for broadband adoption spurring. So the master broadband plan update covered a wide range of activities. And the implementation plan focused on eight of those things as near term. And in some cases, longer term actions and interventions that the county could take with partners to help speed and accelerate broadband deployment and also increase broadband adoption. Those planned sections, there's eight of them. One focuses on community anchor institutions that still don't have availability at one gigabit per second. Symmetrical one gigabit per second is both the state's and the federal goal for every community anchor institution. And community anchor institutions are everything from government facilities to school facilities to hospitals, public safety locations. Even a public housing is included in the definition of community anchor institution. Second part, implementing right away management policies, processes and procedures to accelerate broadband deployment. Dick will talk about both of those first parts. Developing partnerships and working with broadband providers in the county's already been involved in that. In working with MediaCom and supporting their FFA application, working with the RCRC and the GSCA. And their applications for FFA. And, you know, communicating with AT&amp;T on some of the things that they're working on doing. And this will continue in the BEED process. Improving broadband internet reliability, resiliency and redundancy in Lake County. That's one of the things that the master broadband plan update made clear. Was that there are areas where there's broadband availability, but there are problems with reliability. And so there are things that the providers are already undertaking to help increase this. The middle mile will help increase redundancy and resiliency. And so Dick will talk about that a bit. Okay, next slide, please. Some of the things I'll talk about is focusing on regional collaboration and cooperation. And the county already has done that in its application for the NTIA's competitive digital equity grants. Working with the college district and then impacting both Lake and Mendocino counties. Advocacy and funding opportunities at the state and federal level. And Ben's talked about a lot of those already, but we'll touch on some other ones. Expanding public access to the internet and other broadband adoption spurring initiatives. And there's a lot of things that are already going on, especially with the county libraries. We can talk about, you know, other things that can occur in the future. And then one of the key things in any broadband plan, in any implementation plan is to continue to engage with the community, find out what their issues are, because they will evolve. And continue outreach to them, letting them know what the county is doing about expanding and enhancing broadband in Lake County. Okay, next slide, please. All right, Dick, I will turn it over to you.
Okay. Hello, everybody. I'm Dick Nielsen. I'm the senior engineer for CBG Communications. And my focus on these projects tends to be more infrastructure, nuts and bolts part of it. As opposed to the, the things that Tom and Christine work on, the, and what do we need to make people more, make it more available from a financial standpoint, from an education standpoint and so on. So I'm gonna dive into the infrastructure parts here. And the, one of the first parts we looked at were the anchor institutions in the county. And they, they get kind of a wide definition, but it's governmental institutions, educational. And then, as you can see on the screen, the Moose Lodge, fire protection, some church facilities, et cetera, et cetera. We looked at two hundred and twenty one facilities, although some of them are multiple entities within the same building. So in reality, it's probably about a hundred and fifty buildings that we, we looked at. And of all of those, broadband was either available and being used within the facility. Or it was maybe a mile, mile and a half away, probably less than a mile and a half. And then the ones on the screen are the ones that are a little bit further. Those would take a little bit more money to get a connection to them. And again, the speeds we are looking for is one gigabit per second in both directions or symmetrical. Go to the next one. Another portion of the project that I was closely related, worked in, was working with other county departments to see, hey, what are their needs? How can they help us to get broadband deployed quicker? Of course, Public Works is probably the biggest one or the, the most evident one in that they're the ones that oversee all of your, your rights of way and your, my mind went blank on the, but basically any publicly owned facilities, out like streets and parks and all of that. And they're the ones that would work with the providers that want to come into the, the community or that want to expand in the community and work with permits and all of those kinds of things, inspections. I'm gonna go ahead and skip. Oh, well, we would work with them to build up new policies or, or maybe tweak the existing policies. And of those, how can we streamline road permitting? And we did talk to Public Works about these things and, and gave them some ideas on, you know, how can we streamline the road permitting that maybe makes it a little bit easier for a broadband provider to come in? And maybe a little bit cheaper because it doesn't take them as much to put together a permit. You know, they can go into areas that maybe before they couldn't, things like that. So again, expanded utility coordination, so having the county work closely with, with the providers. And this is not to say they don't already. This is just, you know, taking another fresh look at it. Develop a micro trenching policy and permitting process. This is, it's not really new anymore, but it's, it tends to be new in, in communities around the country still in that they haven't seen it yet. If you can go to the next one. Basically, the way it works traditionally, well, traditionally, ten years ago, everything was pretty much trenched in. You had a trench that was a foot, two feet, three feet across, down maybe four, five, six feet. Then you drop the cables in, water pipes, sewer pipes, whatever, and then you backfill it. Micro trenching is, as you can see here, it's a blade inside of that circular shaped thing that has the MT sixteen on it. And that's just a big saw blade and it's cutting down eighteen inches. It looks like they've got it pulled up a little bit right now, but, but they go down roughly eighteen inches. And that's all to be decided by the community, by the county in this case. And it goes about two inches wide. They drop fiber down in there. They put in the right, you know, sand below it. So it's, it's cushioned a little bit and then they put in material on top of it. And theoretically, when they're done with it, you can, other than visually, you can see there's a mark there. It should be pretty much the same as what was there before they got there. We did talk to the, the Public Works and there's a lot of work to do on this process ahead of time to make sure that you have the right standards and policies, procedures in place that cannot be deviated from. In other places, they've had problems with this, this technique, but it's, it's mostly because the oversight wasn't there. And then the contractor didn't do what they were supposed to do, so. Next slide. Okay, another, another piece is to develop a dig one policy and the county has looked at this before again. But what that means is, okay, if we're gonna replace a, a section of road or, or we're gonna dig up and replace water pipes, sewer pipes, you know, we're gonna have a big impact area. Okay, let's let all of the other broadband providers that might have fiber optics that could go in there or at least conduits that would then later accommodate fiber optic pulled through it. And, you know, there's not a lot of this in the county, but I do know when I was out in Lake County back, gosh, a year and a half ago now, there had been a, a water project out in the Spring Valley area where they put in, I think it was like five miles. That would have been a great opportunity to take stuff that, that was on poles or did not even exist yet because it's too expensive to run out there for the number of potential customers. But put conduits in the ground and that would take, that would take the cost of building in the future way, way down. So we looked at master lease terms for county-owned vertical and, and other assets and tweaked on those a little bit and made some suggestions in the report. Next slide. This one gets, you know what? I think I'm gonna skip this one. This one is the, Ben touched on the FFA funding that AT&amp;T and MediaCom got. This shows all of the initial, and it's really kind of hard to read, but shows all of the initial application areas. And, and because Ben showed you where those, where they got money, AT&amp;T and MediaCom. I think that, that pretty much told the story anyway. But if nothing else, this shows the, the extent of areas throughout the county that still are in need of additional broadband. Right around the lake, it's not too bad. Right around Lake Middleton, you know, more densely populated areas. It's, it's not too bad. There's always room for improvement. But as you all know, I'm sure, I'm telling you something you don't know. You get out into the more rural parts of the county and it, it gets hard to find pretty quickly. One solution for more rural areas is our wireless providers. AT&amp;T and Verizon offer wireless, fixed wireless services, which is basically, in layman's terms, it's cellular internet with a fixed antenna on the side of your building. So it's as good as the, as the cable or as the cellular services in that area. It's gonna vary based on how many people are using it. And, but it's, you know, it's a heck of a lot better than nothing for sure. Valley internet has a pretty good presence in the county and they're always looking to expand. So we've worked with them on, on some ideas throughout the county over the past two months, or two months, two years, two plus years. So, you know, those are possibilities. We were just talking to somebody this morning about an area north of the lake where on a flat map, wireless would be the absolute way to go up there because there's not a lot of people, you know, population up there. They're spread out. Putting fiber in might be cost prohibitive, but wireless would do it. Oh, wait a minute. You've got all the valleys and the hills and the mountains, right? So, so that becomes very, very costly as well because you have to put up more antennas. So these are the types of things we looked at. Next. We also looked at the MediaCom backup powering issue. They've, they've come out with, I don't think it's done yet, but they're going to increase the standby power in their, in their cable plant, their distribution plant that's out, out along the poles and whatnot. And are gonna go from two or three hours of backup in that to twenty four hours of backup. And it'll be monitored so that they can go out there. If they go to, if they lose utility power, which they claim is their biggest problem, the monitoring will tell them that, okay, we're running on batteries right now and you've got five hours before the batteries run out. So then they can, they can roll a truck out there, hook up a generator like you'd have at your house and run it off of a gas power generator until power comes back up. AT&amp;T's biggest focus is getting rid of their copper plant and replacing it with fiber. And you saw in Ben's presentation, a couple or a few of the areas where, where that will be taking place. And then another thing that MediaCom brought up is that they think a lot of people that have problems with reliability maybe lose power at their house, but MediaCom's network, because they are backed up by batteries, they might be working. And where this would show up is if you have a laptop, which of course has its own battery in it, a cell phone that you're using the wifi on, they're all, they all have batteries. But the modem that MediaCom uses inside your house does not have battery backup. And therefore that goes out with your house power. How much of the, the reliability issue is, is that? I don't know, but, but certainly that's, that's a piece of it. So they were gonna work on adding that educational piece into their, into their marketing, so. And then we also talked about the anticipated state mile middle network being used. MediaCom and AT&amp;T aren't big on using that. They like to use their own plant. And frankly, the timing of the middle mile is, is a little bit, it moves. So they're not, they're not crazy about waiting for that middle mile to come in and having a lot of capital stranded, you know, while they're waiting for the back haul, so. Next.
I think Dick, this is where I'll pick it up.
Yep, yep.
So the first half of the implementation plan really is devoted to the issues that Dick just went over. A lot of it related to deployment. The second half is also talking about deployment as far as funding and cooperation. But it really also focuses on broadband adoption. So one of the things that we looked at was what kind of either additional or enhanced regional collaboration and cooperation could take place between the county and others in the region. And of course, the county is already a member of the RCRC. And the RCRC has started the Golden State Connect Authority. So, and the county has been involved in their efforts, including the local agency technical assistance grant that the RCRC, or I'm sorry, the Golden State Connect Authority worked on for the county to, to design a number of miles of broadband infrastructure, which was then the focus of their, their FFA application. And again, there's, as Ben told you, there's still some funding sitting out there designated for Lake County. And so there may still be opportunities for GSCA to, to get those portions or some portion of what they had proposed built. The Upstate California Connect Consortium, the county's been a member of that for a while with two other counties in the same region. And some other consortiums have, or consortia, have utilized funding that can come from the CPUC to help fund the efforts of the, the consortia to do broadband feasibility studies and to also look at other specific types of activities that will help enhance and expand broadband. So we recommended in the plan that the county work with the other counties and the UCCC and see if they can take advantage of some of the opportunities through the CPUC. I'll give you an example. Napa County and the North Bay, North Coast Broadband Consortium recently got funding from the CPUC to do a feasibility study to interconnect some of their most rural areas with wireless transport that would be where the towers would be interconnected by fiber optics. And that's something that they're looking at to kind of, again, fill the gaps. So similar to what Dick was talking about with, with valley internet. And then the Mendocino Lake region, an example of that is, is what the county has already done, working with the college district in going after broadband adoption funds. Next slide, please. There are a number of funding opportunities at the state and federal level. Ben talked about some of those and I'll, I'll just touch on those briefly, but I'll talk about some of the other funding opportunities. So for primarily for deployment, the California Advanced Services Fund Grants through the CPUC are something that will be important after the federal funding goes away or is all expended. Because the state for years has supported, again, these are small builds, but by the time you add them together over time, they begin to, to really fill the gaps. And there are still some wireless providers' applications outstanding with current, I'll just use the acronym CASF grants. Also, the CPUC, as well as the California Department of Technology, they have other, besides broadband infrastructure grants, they have other types of grants too, including broadband adoption grants. And there are some opportunities to go after that funding, the next round, I believe, of the adoption-related grants. The applications are due, I believe, July one, either June, June one or July one, but late spring, early summer. Federal funding account, Ben's already talked about. Next slide, please. So BEED, broadband equity access and deployment, this is the federal process. And the state has now issued the timeline for the applications and Ben went through that with you. Defined by census block groups, priorities. Uh, uh, defined by census block groups, prioritized to first served unserved locations and then underserved locations. And as Ben said, there's a 25% match except in high-cost areas. Um, next slide please. Um, here is one of those high-cost areas. And so it has to have, as Ben said, there's certain attributes, including 80% has to be unserved. Um, and then also, um, the cost. So when you, uh, file your application and say, well, we don't need a match here, you also have to prove that the census block, uh, would cost higher than the average of, um, building to other areas that are similar around the country. But the NTIA has done some of that work for you. Uh, it's already designated six census blocks, uh, within the county that it considers high cost and you can prove others if you wanna go through that process, but you have to use their formula. Um, Dick, other things related to the census?
No, I mean, I've got the list in front of me. It's, it's gotta be remote, population densities taken in, uh, topography, poverty levels, and then, uh, like Tom said, the the 80% or more has to be below that 25 over three number, which, you know, that's not a really high, it can, you can even work applications on that, but it's pretty slow speed to to be sharing in a household, so. So yeah, other than that, I think you hit it. It has to be below the average cost of all other unserved areas. Or above, excuse me. It has to be more expensive to build than other unserved areas.
Right. And and so one of the things you'll notice about this particular one is it's, you know, not too far from, um, from Lakeport, um, but it gets very rural very fast. Um, and Dick, unless I'm viewing this wrong, it does have the state middle mile going through it.
That's the dotted line, right?
Yeah, and so that's what, that's where the public policy piece can come in. And we talk about this in the implementation plan, is the county working with providers, achieving public policy goals and working with them to say, well, all right, so there's not as many, um, uh, households or, uh, they call them broadband serviceable locations within this census block group, but you don't have to have the match and there are probably, uh, ways to, uh, proceed uh, that are cost-effective because you can access the state middle mile. So, and again, I, I think Dick, uh, you know, I'm not, um, certain of this, I'd have to go back and look, but I think this was part of one of the, uh, Golden State Connect Authority's areas, or at least it was proximally.
I think the one above it, the Witter Springs, that's a, that's actually a second block group. Um, I think that one probably gets more of the Golden State area in it, but yeah.
Right. So it's, it's really, it's kind of finding out what they're gonna do for BEED, working with them. Similar to how the county worked with, um, MediaCom during the, um, as you probably recall, that application was due about the same time that the broadband plan was provided in September of 2023. And the county, uh, had some substantial discussions with MediaCom. We were involved in some of those, um, in looking at different areas and, um, ultimately identifying the one that, um, that MediaCom pursued and now got funding for. Okay, next slide please. All right, uh, Ben's already talked about this, um, and it's something that the the county wants the, um, there was a stakeholder meeting, uh, this past Friday. Um, and so we anticipate that the CDT will issue the, um, final, they're, they're still draft, issue the final, um, application, um, uh, criteria and deadline soon. And you can anticipate that you'll have about 60 days from the time of that issuance to, um, uh, to having to file an application. So, uh, we know Ben's already been looking at opportunities and, you know, some of them would include some of the same partners, uh, that the county partnered with to go after the, um, the NTIA grant. Um, okay, uh, next slide. Uh, Ben's already talked about some of this, so again, you'll see there's a wide range of things that, uh, capacity grant funding can be used for. Um, you know, including, uh, just outreach. Uh, it can be used, uh, for all sorts of navigation services and literacy training. It can use for, be used for device programs, uh, it could expand current, uh, computer labs. Uh, and the state's really big on workforce training programs, especially related to to broadband-related jobs. Okay, next slide. Um, Ben's talked about this, uh, so we're awaiting word on the status of its application. The NTIA did, before the administrations changed, they did, uh, issue awards, uh, but there's still funding out there. About, uh, $619 million, uh, dollars were awarded, but it's a 1.25 billion grant source. Um, so we're awaiting what the NTI will, A, will do next on that. Okay, next. Um, USDA grants and loans, um, we, um, have looked at those. They were, um, uh, funded, uh, during the continuing appropriation as part of the farm bill extension. Uh, but we don't know what the current criteria are, but, uh, that covers, uh, areas that are, uh, very rural. Uh, again, looking at the 80% threshold for unserved, um, and those areas are already designated, uh, within the county. Um, and you'd work with providers to go after reconnect loans. If they re-up the Community Connect Program, that's one where, um, the the county itself could apply for funds, but it has to be utilized for connecting community facilities. Um, that, you know, again, with some of these programs, you can, uh, broaden, um, kind of your, your, uh, expand your, your, uh, concept, uh, and, uh, um, but it's best to talk to a USDA representative. We actually have a, um, a, uh, email into the, uh, general, uh, field representative for the USDA for this area after talking to the Rural Development Officer in, uh, Sonoma County. Uh, USDA grants, we had a discussion with them last, uh, week and and they're really focused on business. So any funding that would come for broadband would have to support, uh, sustainability of business within the county and or new businesses coming into the county. Okay, next slide. Um, uh, partnerships, uh, and I'll just go through these. They're, uh, very well detailed in the plan, uh, but certainly, uh, traditional agencies like the library, um, community development, uh, as part of, uh, what they're looking at related to, uh, some of the development plans, the area, uh, plans, as well as the Project, uh, 2050. Um, and the community development, uh, focus there, Department of Social Services. Um, and, uh, they traditionally, um, have, uh, looked at, you know, working with community partners and some of the grant funding available. Um, and would be also, uh, a, a great agency to help do outreach. Uh, municipal governments, Lakeport and, um, and Clear Lake continue their efforts, uh, you know, trying to, uh, expand public wifi. Uh, educational entities, um, uh, including all the school districts and tribal nations. In fact, the discussion we had today, that Dick referenced, uh, was related to the HPUL, uh, project, uh, where they're, uh, looking at, uh, broadband assessment, um, right at this very time. Uh, next slide please. Um, all right, so the last part of the, um, implementation plan focuses on outreach and engagement. And this is really important. Um, in fact, um, one of the things we encourage the county to do is become kind of a clearinghouse. It doesn't have to provide, uh, programs necessarily, uh, but, um, uh, engage with people and, uh, steer them towards these programs. Um, so affordable access to, uh, internet initiatives and programs. Right now, uh, the federal government has, um, tabled its program, uh, uh, the Affordable Connectivity Program, uh, but there are still programs, um, instituted by the providers. Um, digital skills training and education, libraries are already doing that and looking at, you know, expanding it. That was one of the things the, the grant application was all about. Um, and that includes public access to high-capacity internet and internet-capable devices and peripherals. And there are some, again, with the libraries and other, uh, organizations. Um, uh, next slide please. Uh, loaner programs, um, and this is one of the things that came out in the Master Broadband Plan Update, but also is really critical in the implementation plan, um, is that, um, while community access to internet devices and and high-capacity, uh, internet access is is a critical thing, um, the thing that demonstrates the most success, um, is getting it into the houses, getting it into the households. And so any loaner programs that provide hotspots and and Chromebooks, uh, will be very helpful to the families, um, that need those services. Um, and then accessibility features for people living with disabilities, uh, and how to utilize them the most effectively. Uh, next slide please. Um, and the final thing is continual community engagement. Uh, this is important because you can do a master broadband plan update, you can do an implementation plan. Uh, you can be going about all the activities recommended, but you need to keep the community in the loop. Um, so some, uh, counties will establish a broadband page on their website and they'll update it, uh, with news and they'll, it'll be the link, uh, to, um, you know, through both the website and social media to, uh, some of the clearinghouse information. And then ongoing survey efforts to maintain a feedback loop, and that's critical. Are you doing the things that the community, uh, needs most? And, you know, we did a lot of, um, uh, surveying and, um, and obtaining feedback and, uh, working with organizations in the Master Broadband Plan Update. Um, and that's, you know, circa 2023 now. The implementation plan builds on that. That's circa 2024, uh, the end of 2024, so not that old. Um, but, you know, in the next couple of years, it it certainly would be good for the county to look at, all right, what's happening now? Um, next slide please. And one of the things that we developed for the county, both, um, online and in print form, was a survey that could be utilized. And it, it's pretty much a, um, um, you know, a timeless kind of survey, but it's in both English and Spanish. It might have to, you know, be tweaked here and there as, uh, providers provide new programs and those kind of things. But as a baseline, it would serve really well to be able to, uh, provide it. It doesn't have to be statistically valid. You don't have to send it out to, you know, 4,000 addresses in the county. It's really just to obtain feedback and get some sense of what's occurring in the community. So it could be, you know, handed out at libraries. It could be linked through the county's, um, website and, uh, start to obtain feedback. Promoting it, awareness is really critical to getting feedback, um, is an important part. Okay, um, that's it for our part of the presentation. I know we've taken a lot of time and I, I really appreciate, um, the county giving us this time to talk about all these efforts. Um, and so, uh, Ben, I think, uh, we can probably just take questions.
Sounds great. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Sabatier?
Uh, thank you for that. I, I have a couple of questions. Uh, once, uh, first, I guess a comment, the Dig1s policy has been something we've been talking for a while and I think we just need to make it a priority to finally get this through. Uh, I know I've provided a, um, uh, the UCCC gave us a policy, the Dig1s policy to begin with that was passed on to our Public Works Director. I tweaked it eventually to just make it so that we could protect our roads. I passed that on to our Public Works Director, but I think we just need to prioritize it because it's not just broadband. It's water utilities, it's sewer, it's PG&E, any kind of undergrounding that's happening that's ruining our roads. It's not helping our status with where our roads are. So I appreciate it's brought up, uh, but I think we as a board need to really prioritize to make that happen, especially as we're looking to implement our 10-year plan, uh, and get that moving forward. We wanna protect our roads and make sure what's underneath them is what we need. Um, I, I, I see that Starlink is only mentioned in the survey and I'm, I'm guessing that the response to why are we not identifying, uh, the availability? Because there may be some places that it's not available. Uh, is it because of proprietary information that we're not able to obtain? Um, because it's definitely something that I'm hearing more and more that is being utilized and it's actually working really well and has a comparable price to what MediaCom would be. So, uh, is that something that was looked into at all and how that's impacting our access to broadband here in Lake County?
Um, yes, um, uh, and a couple of things on that and then I'll turn that over to Dick. Um, one of the things that the, um, uh, FCC assumes, so you're using both the FCC and the CPUC maps, um, is that Starlink would be universally available, uh, throughout the county. And so, um, it's considered, um, as a, uh, you know, provider of, um, of what would be considered currently served status. Um, however, because the, um, federal government, uh, has to this point prioritized fiber to the premise, um, and the funding is all available for that, that was really kind of the focus of both the, um, broadband plan update and the implementation plan is to look at, you know, where the funding would be available. Um, the other thing is, um, at least now, uh, Starlink, um, does not, um, with the current capabilities, does not meet the ultimate goal of 100 megabits symmetrical. And anything that's funded, again, by the federal government, um, and or the state, you know, coming down through the state, has to meet, has to be able to meet that goal, if not now, you know, scalable in the immediate future. And so that's another reason that we didn't look at it. Um, the, the final thing is, um, and, you know, Dick, you correct me if I'm wrong. Um, well, while you will find that, um, some are able to afford Starlink, it, it's still, uh, as far as the device and the, um, and the monthly, uh, access cost is still above what the FCC would consider, um, would be, um, affordable to those that, you know, may have the most, um, uh, you know, the base, uh, the, the lowest socioeconomic status, so wouldn't be able to, uh, afford it. So it, it still becomes an adoption inhibitor. So I, I think those are the, the three things, but yes, Starlink, uh, certainly in rural areas and and where it can be afforded and where, um, you know, while the FCC says it's universally available, it's not necessarily, you know, depending on where you live. Um, and that issue, uh, you know, again, uh, creates, um, uh, you know, a problem for people that think it, it, uh, will work for them and it, it won't, but you're right, it is, uh, for those most, um, you know, out in the hinterlands and and, uh, will be the most expensive to serve with wireline infrastructure, it is a good option for them. Now, Dick, you wanna chime in there?
I think you pretty much hit it. The only thing I would add to that is, uh, now I haven't looked in, in a month, probably a little over a month, but Starlink tends to be somewhere around $500, uh, for up, you know, startup equipment. Um, I know they've got some, some new packages coming out all the time, so I'll, I'll have to take a look at that again. But the last I looked, they were around $500 just to get started. And then they're 100-ish, uh, per month for what they advertised to be 220 forward and 25 upstream. So, um, yeah, the out-of-pocket will be, the monthly out-of-pocket will be roughly what it is for some of the other providers, but the speeds will be, will be a little bit less. That all being said, I'm, I'm all for it in the, the rural areas where there's nothing, no other options or no other good options. So it is definitely a piece of the broadband puzzle. There's no doubt about that.
I appreciate that. Uh, my next question is, uh, it's always been difficult to get maps from our ISPs, uh, because again, proprietary, they don't wanna tell everybody where they are. Uh, are we making any headway to continue to get updates and understand where the gaps are? Or are we gonna continuously have to, um, hire out consultants to get an update on where we are five, 10 years from now? I, I'm just, it, it, has that change where maybe the county can sign NDAs and be able to keep track of what's going on? Um, because it's an economic development tool and us having the ability to know where things are located and not located is important.
Yeah, I, I can take that one. We don't, we don't have much better as far as exactly where the fiber is. In other words, oh, it's in the front yard versus backyard, it's on a pole versus underground. But the FCC has developed maps, uh, starting a few years ago already. And each version that comes out is better than the previous one, more accurate, right? It's like anything. Um, so we can tell where Comcast is, where MediaCom is, where AT&amp;T is, or CenturyLink is. We can tell at the address level now where they are and where they are not and what the speeds are. We don't know about pricing using that, that, uh, FCC map. But, um, yeah, that's, it's much, much, much better than it was just a couple of years ago. Couple of years ago, there's a, frankly, a lot of guesswork involved in it and and that's been replaced now with, with real information, so.
I appreciate that.
You guys can get it and I believe Steve, Stephen Carter's the, the main contact for the county there. He is, I see he's at the meeting, so he can speak to that maybe.
I was just gonna quickly add, uh, yeah, the FCC map has been a major improvement and then you should get even more info with the BEED map that should come out this month.
Good, and I, I appreciate the evolution and that. Um, I'll, I'll go straight to my last question rather than continuing. I'll, I'll send some to, uh, Mr. Rickelman. Uh, how do we hold, uh, AT? How do we hold, uh, AT&amp;T and MediaCom accountable for the dollars that they're getting from federal government to do this work, to expand it, to reach a certain amount of people? If they end up spending that money, but they don't actually meet their goal of reaching those people, then we have a hole in what we anticipated. What's our ability as a county to hold them accountable to what they received funding for?
Yeah, that's going to be my favorite question right there. Tom, you want to take it or?
I can answer.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, oh, okay. I'm sorry, Ben.
So we can't directly hold them accountable, but the CPUC can? So they're entering into contracts with FFA grants. And so they're locked into these, uh, funding commitments for five years and reliability of service. So it's, if we hear of issues, we should be communicating with the CPUCs since they are the ones with the contracts and the money.
I think it's fair to ask them for ongoing updates. You know, okay, you said you're going to cover this area. Where are you? What issues are you coming up against that maybe the county can help you with? So that you're not looking at it five years from now going, oh, man, they only got 20% done. I don't think it's going to be that bad, but, but just to make sure, you let them know somebody's watching. There's a lot to just that.
Yeah, I think, I'll echo that too. That's very important. That's one of the things we mentioned in the implementation plan is not just an advocacy role at the CPUC, but an ongoing, um, you know, oversight role. While you don't have, while the state hasn't given you, you know, regulatory authority over these entities, they have the regulatory authority. And so, once you see something that doesn't appear to be in line with their requirements, like Ben said, those are, you know, public documents, their requirements to build within a certain timeframe and to provide a certain level of service. If they don't, then you, you should file a complaint with the CPUC and, and work with them to hold, um, you know, those that they do regulate accountable.
I appreciate the suggestions and I hope you come back and let us know what your plan is so that we can support you in holding them accountable. So, thank you.
Supervisor Owen?
Yeah, do you have any idea, um, about how many unserved households will be served with this?
With the, um, federal funding account, and I can't remember.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Uh, with the federal funding account, I can't remember exactly, but Ben had that in his, um, you know, in his, uh, current, uh, the beginning of the PowerPoint.
It's roughly around, uh, I think 3,100 households, but I can double check on that. But that's just for the current, uh, the recently announced award funding allocation. So there's about, uh, $13 million more that should be awarded in the future.
3,100 households. And, uh, what's the total price?
So the awards that were announced, uh, last week were about 14.6 million.
But I think the, the total price is higher than that. That's the.
That's the grant amounts. But there's, uh, there's a match from the companies too.
Okay, and so the, um, let me see. 3,100?
So I do have it broken down. I can send you the information, the grant to, like, the per award, per household. Um, we have that by ISP, so I could send that information to you.
Well, I'm just looking at like the cost of Starlink putting in, I mean, not all of them would qualify, but if we did it on a sliding scale of, for those that, you know, what they make. If we were to supply 1,300 homes, it would be 1 million, fi, uh, you know, one and a half million.
Yeah, I mean, it's the direction the states want to go with wireline. I guess the, the argument they would make is it's a little more future-proof. So, once you've made the investment and, you know, there's more and more demand on what people want to use the internet for, so higher and higher service. So, once you have this fiber in the ground, they should be set for decades to come. Now, you know, Starlink could improve with capacity and performance too. And, um, but we just kind of have to follow the direction. I mean, it's, it's the state program, so we have to follow what they're doing.
Right, I was just wondering if it was the wisest financially?
Yeah, it, it's a good question. So there's ongoing debate on kind of technology prioritization with these funds. You know, and our topography here makes it more difficult and more expensive for wireline fiber. So for a lot of the country, it's, um, much more cost efficient just to light fiber. Whereas here, alternative technologies like satellite or fixed wireless might be much more appropriate on a cost per household.
Yeah, I think if I can jump in real quick, I, I think it's, it's sort of a, a hybrid look, um, that will ultimately work best for Lake County. So it's going to be, you know, some satellite, it's going to be some fixed wireless. It's going to be as much wireline as you, you can put in cost effectively. And I, that is the, I think focus is on fiber to the premises, as, as Ben said. If, if constructed properly, um, you know, uh, FTP can last up to 50 years. And so if you think of that going in the ground now, I, you, and, and the important thing about that is the fiber has near, nearly, uh, limitless bandwidth capacity. It's really the electronics on the end. And so you could easily go from 100 megabits symmetrical to a gig symmetrical to at some point 10 gig symmetrical, which means that, that, that home or business will have the capacity it needs for, you know, decades to come. I think that's, that's their focus is sort of the longevity of the program. Yes, it might be more expensive at this, uh, point in time, but over time it becomes less expensive because of the, um, the lack of need to replace the infrastructure. Again, as Dick said, you know, that's going to be based on construction techniques and there is always, you know, the potential for wildfires and those kinds of things that requires the replacement of gardens. So there, there's a lot of variables, but I think that's, that's where they came out with, let's focus on fiber.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I just wanted to say, I think the, the resiliency and redundancy is what we're aiming for here. If people want to purchase their own satellite access, they can do that. We're not paying for people's MediaCom or AT&amp;T access. Providing infrastructure to make sure people can access those things. I think the more we have redundancy, the better off we'll be. We've shut down here before because the fiber optics went down. Schools have shut down before, so I am really looking for that redundancy so that nobody has to be shut down for a day or even an hour. That's, that's what I hope that our goal will, that, uh, the outcome will be with the goals that we have currently.
All right. Uh, any other comments from the board? Not hearing any. I'll open it up for the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this, uh, item on the agenda, this presentation? All right. Not hearing any, I'll bring it back to the board. I think we have some action, right?
No action, but I, I just want to thank you, Ben, um, and everyone for working on this. This has been a priority.
Oh, that's right.
For a long time, um, to make sure that not just our residents, but our businesses, our schools, um, our public safety, everyone has access to reliable internet. So it's been, it's been a heavy load for a long time. So I just really appreciate the thoroughness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben, thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you for, uh, attending via Zoom and answering questions.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity to, to, uh, talk with you today. We appreciate it.
All right. All right, so we'll go ahead and close this item on the agenda if there's nothing else. And, uh, we will go on to the next, uh, item, which is, let's see. I have it right here. 6.7, right? Am I right? Yeah, 11 o'clock hearing, consideration of request for post-abatement hearing on account and proposed assessment of summary abatement. 6439 15th Avenue.
Thank you.
California APN 034212-10. And we have the Community Development Department coming forward. Looks like Shannon is coming forward along with Marcus Beltramo.
Good morning.
One second, please. Lloyd?
Mr. Chair, your board may consider swearing in witnesses for anyone who may want to testify as part of this public hearing.
Okay. Johanna?
Um, the, the property owner's here in attendance today. I just want to see if you need any special accommodations. So if, rather than sitting at the stand or have her sit in that, that special area, designated area over there.
Okay. Would you like to move forward into the, uh, this area over here so you have a closer, uh...
There's, there's no microphone setup over here.
We're okay if you want to sit up here as well.
It's either this standing microphone or here. Put them up here.
I can watch, it's not far distances.
Okay. Either of these chairs, whichever is comfortable and then you'll be using the chair.
Oh, yes.
If I need to share the screen first.
Hold on, I gotta swear.
Yes, now we would swear, uh, we swear some.
And me raising, raising her hand in Zoom. So what, if you're gonna, okay, there you go. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you.
And I know, sir, you're here with her. Are you going to be speaking? No, okay, okay. All right.
Good morning, Board. Shannon Walker Smith, Deputy, uh, Community Development Administrator. And, uh, we are here today to present a post-abatement lien hearing. I'm going to hand it off to Code Enforcement Manager, Mark, Marcus Beltramo.
Good morning. Good morning, Marcus Beltramo, manager of the Code Enforcement Division for Lake County. And today we, uh, come from, before the board to request, uh, a lien be recorded or attached against the property, uh, for which an abatement occurred. Uh, the property, uh, the subject of our, uh, hearing here today is 6439 15th Avenue, Lucerne, California, APN 03421210. I do want to, uh, start our presentation by, uh, reminding the board that this, uh, we did come before the board previously on this property for a summary abatement report. Um, no action was taken during that, uh, session. Um, it was just a report to report on the summer, the conditions that necessitated, necessitated the summary abatement. Today, we are here to recoup the funds for that summary abatement or cost recovery and to request a lien be attached against the property. That being said, uh, the property owner is Rhonda Maril. Uh, Rhonda Maril is here today. The zoning designation for the property is R1. It's a single-family residential property. The lot size is about .14 acres. We always kind of provide a map to give you context of where the, uh, property, subject property is located. It is in a fairly highly densely, densely populated area in Lucerne. Um, you know, we received a complaint on this property. We were flagged down by a UPS, uh, worker who directed our attention to this property. Christopher Colan was the code enforcement officer assigned to that complaint or that was flagged down by that UPS worker. Christopher Colan's here today. He conducted the investigation and handled the abatement so he can testify to anything that occurred on the property or provide any firsthand testimony if required or requested by the board. On January 24, 2024, when, uh, Officer, Code Officer Chris Colan approached the property, these are the conditions that he documented and observed. And as you can see on the property there, there's a lot of rubbish, a lot of trash. Um, the car, the, the trunk's open or the hood has popped open. Probably, I think we determined it was in an inoperable condition. Uh, didn't have a battery or power to operate. But there's a lot of trash and there's a lot of rubbish strewn across the property. Actually, I want to go back here. If you can see the blue coloration kind of on the left photo on the left over here, um, those are chuck pads and those are medical pads. And they were filled with waste. And, and we reasonably believe it was human waste. Um, we also determined through our investigation, the power had a lack of running water service to the fixtures. Um, we posted a 72-hour notice to restore water. We also, below that, you can see our consent to inspect form. This is a formal document that we provide to the property owner that they can sign, consenting to an inspection or an abatement of the property. Uh, again, on the right there, you could see the conditions of the property. You could also see after the 72 hours expired, we posted a red tag for lack of water service. Um, there's lack of water service. That is one of the conditions which, uh, we do post red tags for. Um, again, these are just, uh, we did obtain, uh, an inspection warrant. Initially, we saw the complaint, we saw the conditions. Uh, we did request an inspection warrant prior to the summary abatement. Uh, we had concerns that the inside or the interior of the property may be in a substandard condition based on the conditions on the outside and the fact that there was lack of water. So we did try to obtain an inspection warrant. Uh, these warrants are from that inspection. Uh, we weren't, we were unable to complete the inspection. As you could see, by the time we opened the, made entry into the, the dwelling there, uh, we could not proceed any further with the inspection because of the amount of items cluttered and stored and hoarded throughout the house. At that point, we requested the summary abatement. Uh, we got the proper approval from county council and a supervisor from the board. And then we, the summary abatement was only for those immediate conditions that pose a significant or imminent risk to health and safety. Again, these are conditions of the property and you can see the property was in a substandard condition. On the right, you can see the trash, the garbage and the, uh, uh, blue pads that had the waste contained within them. Again, just another photo just to provide context of what we saw and the conditions that we believed necessitated the, uh, summary abatement. Uh, so we were granted, uh, the summary abatement. Actually, I want to go just kind of comment a little further. Again, here's an up-close picture of those chuck pads or those medical pads. And that was one of our major concerns is that the waste was not being handled or disposed properly and also that it was blowing onto other neighbors' properties or neighboring properties. And we all, um, prior hearings, uh, we've all had the discussion that human waste does have communicable diseases and that is a, uh, immediate health and safety or poses immediate health and safety risk. Again, just more pictures of the inside, the interior. More photos, as you can see on the right, there's piles of, I'm gonna assume they're trash and garbage stacked up in the bathroom. You can see the condition of the toilets. These are the post-summary abatement photos. Basically, we cleared out the immediate, those issues causing the imminent or immediate health and safety risk. On the right, you could see we cleared it out. Um, we did clear a pathway. The pathway, the purpose of the pathway was to allow our contractors to get in to clear out those immediate health and safety risks. Also, it also, uh, removed a code violation for not having an un, un-instructed pathway to a public area in case there was an emergency. Although, again, the property is red-tagged, so nobody was to be occupying it except for the purposes of correcting the violations. Again, these are just post-summary abatement photos. And we did caution off the back door because it didn't have the proper steps that posed a, a safety hazard. Uh, we did hire 360 junk removal and hauling to perform the summary abatement. The cost of the contractor charges was $7,900. Approximately 16,480 pounds of garbage, rubbish or, uh, immediate, those issues posing an immediate health and safety risk were removed from the property. Um, we also looked to recover administration costs. I believe the administration costs are in the amount of 1,000, uh... At this time, staff is recommending the board supervisor approve a lien in the amount of $9,339.96 and to direct staff to record a lien against the property. Uh, that concludes my presentation. I'm open to any questions, uh, that the board may have.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I have two questions. Appreciate the work to clean this up. Can't imagine what the neighbors were thinking. This is the first time I'm going to ask you this question. Typically, we see the similar invoice like we have here from 360. Do we actually see a, uh, dump receipt for that? They actually went to the landfill with what we asked them to clean out?
Uh, I don't, we, I don't think we asked for a dump receipt in this case. Um, so if that's something that the board or something you'd like to see, I'm sure.
I think at one point it would be nice to come back and review such policy just because I know that haulers, in my opinion, can tend to be the problem. I'm not saying this one is. I know this gentleman personally, I don't think he would be. Uh, but what I tell everybody is make sure you get your dump receipt or else it may just end up in the middle of nowhere. And I think we need to practice similar ways of dealing with that to make sure that we can prove that it went to the appropriate places rather than just it being part of the $7,900 because we don't, we can't identify, uh, the cost of the landfill, uh, use. So ju, just something to. use. So ju- just something to bring back. Nothing that I would like you to change just because I mentioned it. It's just something that popped in my mind. My second, if you wanted to comment on that.
I was just gonna say, our current policy is to require a dump receipt should the property owner themselves do a cleanup. But we are now going to contract or going to invitation for bid every year for contractors for code enforcement. And certainly, it's something that we could add to our requirements pretty easily in this next round of contracts.
And I, I think it's a reasonable request. We'll incorporate that and make sure that we provide that at the next hearing.
Yep. And then my second question is, I don't see, so you gave him some time to clean some of this up. The whole summary abatement was just a piece. Then the rest was on the internal part of the house and the rest of the mess that was there. Timelines were provided. Nothing was done. I don't see fines involved here. Am I missing that?
So the summary abatement does not require fines. It's just immediately to.
Right, right.
Abate those issues. But we do have a pending notice of violation and an order to abate that have expired. We have been monitoring the progress. The owner has made some progress, got current on her taxes, has been doing the cleanup. But we need to just monitor that and if we need to follow through with that. The admin citations, we do have a process where we're following up on, since the implementation of data ticket, we are going back and following up on those notice of violations. So that's something I will probably need to, I will need to follow up on and make sure the admin citation has been issued and then sent off for processing. So we do have those measures in place and we just need to follow through on our end.
Thank you.
All right. Ma'am, would you like to, do you have anything you would like to say?
Yeah. There, I do have some issues. The, um, the one set of steps, it needed two boards replaced. They, they removed the entire deck, which I now have to replace, you know, and I'm on SSI. I don't have a lot of money for that, you know, and, and they don't even, they didn't even leave the wood there for me to even take measurements of, you know, and then they threw away my, my front-loading washing machine. That's nowhere to be found. They, you know, and the way things were handled, my furniture was all chipped and, you know, I mean, I know it was a mess, but, you know, you know, like they made a big pile in my dining room and put my dryer, my clothes dryer on top of the pile, you know, I mean, it just, and then anything I had locked, it was broken into. I had a, I had a platform on the side and they told me that it was, would only be torn out if the wood was rotten and it wasn't. There was one spot that had some fire burn on it, but it wasn't even burned through and they removed the entire thing, which I'm sure that's most of the weight. But, um, you know, just, and then there's rungs on my other deck that are gone now and the woods nowhere to be found. You know, it's just, you know, I understand they had a job to do. I do understand that. But, you know, you know, I do have, and yeah, and my patio set, one of the chairs, they threw away one chair out of my patio set, you know? It's like, I just feel that the company was just, you know, I don't know. I'm a little lost for words right now, but, so, you know, and I, I can't see it being $7,000 worth of dump runs. Like, you know, now that I know the dollar amount, it's outrageous, but, but yeah, you know, a lot of the stuff didn't need to be hauled away, you know, or torn down, you know? So, you know, I do understand.
So, sir, you, you didn't swear in and you said you weren't gonna say anything?
No, no, just.
Sir?
But, you know, I'm, I'm not arguing about the fact that they had a job to do. I understand that. But, you know, it's just some of the things, it just seems absurd, you know? So that's, that's all I really have to say.
All right. And, and sir, if you really want to speak, we'll have to swear you in. No, no, sir, if, you want, do you want to swear in or?
I would, but you don't want me to, because I've been doing a lot of work here.
All right. Sir, you, all right, sir, that's enough. Because if you're not gonna swear in, then we're not gonna take comments from there. So, okay, is that, do you have anything else or?
No, that's pretty much, I mean, I know it sounds like I'm just complaining, but, you know, you know, I mean, I no longer have a washing machine. I no longer have a deck, you know, and my other deck is broken and platform's gone and, you know, this is, my furniture's chipped up and anything I had locked was broken into, you know? Oh, and they didn't lock the property when they left either. And so thieves came and they snipped the hooks, you know, that hook in to latch it and they snipped those. So the door is ruined, you know, because it was sliding glass door and it's got hooks, you know, and so I can't even, I have to put a board in my door now, you know, I can't even lock it anymore. I thought I was locking it until I found out they snipped the hooks, you know, because it was left unlocked.
Okay. So if there's nothing else, I didn't know if you.
That's all I have to say.
Do you have anything to add to that or?
No, I don't have anything to add to that.
Oh, I, there's one other thing too is, is, you know, the baseball that I said was missing, you know, and I was told that, you know, Chris told me that he would get back to me and he never got back to me. I, I heard from you the one time when you made a comment that, you know, but I never saw a picture and, you know, or anything, you know, about the baseball.
Well, I think they can touch base with you offline about that.
Yeah.
Possibly. This is more about the recommendations and the, the amount and the post-abatement. So if you can, just touch base offline with Chris or with staff.
I'll just add on the cost of the contractor, that it's a combination of both the fees to dump, but also a lot of man hours. So that's, the bulk of the cost is for the time that the.
I fully removed things that didn't, shouldn't have been removed, you know?
Yeah. I mean, I was, I, I was onsite at that abatement. So I know it was very difficult to tell what should go in, what should stay.
Well, I was told all my personal property would be left, you know, and it wasn't, you know. I have three chairs now for my patio set, you know, and, and that platform, you know, it wasn't rotten. I don't know if you saw it or not, but it wasn't rotten. There was one part that was scorched, but, you know, it wasn't unstable or anything.
Okay.
You know, and the whole thing got cut up and removed and, you know.
Helen, did you have something?
I just wanted to say that I'm sorry for what you're going through.
Thank you.
And my heart goes out to you. Do you, and it looks like you have somebody here to help you.
Yeah.
So I want to thank you for helping her.
All right. If there's nothing else, I don't know if Director Turner, if you had anything or, no? All right, if there's nothing else.
I just don't think I should be charged for those things that were removed that shouldn't have been, you know, but that, and that's it. That's all I have to say.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll close this part of the hearing if that's amenable and bring it back to the Board for further deliberation, deliberation or discussion. And as you know, this is in my district. I did actually, that day, I remember going by and stopping by and I seen the department working on this, this abatement during that timeframe. And I can attest, it was very hard to determine anything that was, yeah, it was hard to determine what was to be kept or whatnot. I, you know, and I, and I hear you. I understand. You may know what is kept and what should be kept and what shouldn't be. But at the same time, a lot of these abatements take place and they're around the same amount, if not more at times. So I, you know, I know and understand that there's, you know, disagreement with that. I, I just know that we do these quite often or they bring them here, code does, and it's usually around this price, if not more. So I apologize for what you've been through.
Yeah, I was, nothing would happen to my personal property, you know?
Right. So, okay, then we're, we're gonna move, move on this here and Supervisor Spatier.
I mean, I would suggest anything on your property is your personal property, but we need to make the cleanup and we need to make the community.
Garbage is obviously garbage, you know?
But, but it's still your personal stuff that i- is, is on your property. It just hasn't been dealt with appropriately. It doesn't accumulate overnight. It's accumulated over a long-term period. There's time for you to get to the point where you can get help and do that. I'm glad you do have that help and hopefully that won't happen again. But today, I'm happy to make a motion and we, we don't do work for free. We have to do.
I understand that, but.
We, we have to get repaid for the work that gets done in order to get our communities to look good. So if the Board doesn't mind, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the request for post-abatement. No, let me open up the memo so I can get the exact thing. I apologize. Move to approve the recommended lien in the amount of $9,339.96 and direct staff to record the lien against the property with the Lake County Recorder's Office. After recordation, shall be delivered to the county auditor, who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment roll as special assessments and have the chair sign? No?
Second.
All right.
I gotta send my thumbs up.
No, I don't believe a signature is necessary.
Okay.
For this approval.
That would be the first time I've heard the.
So I, I will amend that to not have the chair sign.
Second.
Wait, a second. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you for the presentation and then thank you for attending as well, ma'am. All right. Let's see here. Let's get back to the agenda. And it looks like we, our next timed isn't until 1:00 PM. So we will move on to.
7.3?
What do we recommend? 7.3.
The last one, I think.
All right. So 7.3 is consideration of a letter of support.
Actually, 7.5 is water resources there. Oh, okay, yeah, 7.3.
So I'll start over. 7.3, consideration of a letter of support for the Lake-Napa Private, Public, Community-Based Organization and Tribal Government Collaborative Forest, Forest Health Project. And we have our Climate Resiliency Officer, Terry Logstine here.
Thank you. Joel Nordlinger, who is the CEO of Napa Firewise, should be on Zoom and promoted to panelist. Joel Nordlinger. Nordlinger. Thank you, Board. Terry Logstine, Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and Tribal Liaison. Today, I'm bringing to you a letter of support from the Napa Communities Firewise Foundation, who's seeking your support on a grant application to CAL FIRE's Forest Health Grant. You may recall that last month, I brought another one. It's in the same area. There's two different projects and both are led by Napa-based organizations. And so this project seeks to repair and rehabilitate forested areas affected by the 2015 Valley Fire and the 2020 Lake Napa Unit fires. It includes removing abundance of dead material on the forest floor, dead and weakened trees, conduct seed collection from local conifers for reforestation support, and the Middletown Rancheria Pomo Indians Cultural Burning of all forest and wildlands on their rancheria and on their newly acquired trust lands, improve forest health at the Montesol Ranch adjacent to Robert Louis Stevenson State Park, and restore habitat on BLM lands. And so, Joe, if you want to give us a, some quick information and if your Board have any questions?
Yeah, good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you for having me. Chair Randall. Terry, thanks for helping to line this up. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you a little bit about this project that, that we've developed that involves land up in, and partners up in Lake County. Again, my name's Joe Nordlinger. I'm the CEO of Napa Firewise. We are sort of the, the leading wildfire resilience and pre-fire organization here in, in Napa County, doing a lot of work around wildfire preparedness, fuel management, outreach, education, defensible space, et cetera. For some time here, we have been working a lot in, in Napa County exclusively on a range of different projects. And we've made a lot of advances. Starting about two and a half years ago, we really intended to pursue projects with some of our county border partners and sought to develop those relationships. We've obviously been involved for a long time with the unit, with Chief Wink as our pre-fire chief within the unit. And we've successfully undertaken some projects in Sonoma and Solano. And this year, we are pursuing a forest health grant. We've successfully secured two of these grants in the past and we decided we wanted to develop a project along the, along the Napa-Lake border and address a number of wildfire resilience issues and forest health issues that are associated with legacy burn scars from the LNU Lightning and the Valley Fire. The letter of support that's before you today outlines some of those partnerships that we've developed in, in, in developing this project with Clerk, the Lake RCD, Montesol Rancheria. And so we've got a number of, several of the Fire Safe Councils up in Lake. So we've been working for several months now to develop this project. We have a very strong application. We have letters of support and letters, letters of commitment from a number of the other partners and we are hoping that the Board of Supervisors will sign on with a letter of support as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions and give you what insights I can about the application.
All right. Any questions? Supervisor Spatier?
I'll, I'll make the same statement I made for last time. And it's actually kind of, I don't want to say perfect, but it just seems timely that it's right after the issue that we just dealt with. Whether you're dealing with trash in your front yard or dealing with forest health on your property that you privately own, yes, you can work with the Firewise communities. That's how they're supposed to work is to try and help out with the communities. But us, as a Board Supervisor, I would prefer if we were not supporting something on private property where the private, private property owner should take responsibility and deal with that on their own. There's already, I believe, a Napa Land Trust. They were given 1.7 million, at least what I was able to find through my research, to deal with forest health. And now they're looking for more. And I don't see on here what the, any commitments or any skin in the game from the property owner. But just because you own 7,000 acres doesn't mean that we should help you while penalize somebody with a 50 by $100, 100-foot lot. So I, I just, I'm, I struggle on that. I would support it if it was just the BLM land and the Middletown Rancheria. But the added private property, I just, I think that can happen between yourselves because again, Firewise communities are meant for that. But getting a letter of support from the Board of Supervisors, if it was for public benefit only, then I would say yes. But to me, it's just, that's not what we're here for.
So I'm not sure if that was a question. It seemed a comment. Let me respond to it. I understand that perspective. We often work with, with large landowners. Sometimes those are private landowners and their commitment is to oftentimes provide matching funds and/or staff and ongoing commitment to maintaining the project work that we do. We found that it's pretty important. FIRE doesn't really care about whether you're a private landowner or a public landowner. And the reality is that there are lots of large landowners and tracts of land. Some of them owned by people that have the means, some owned by people that are sort of property wealthy, cash poor. And the reality is if there's a legacy burn scar and/or an accumulation of fuel, that's a threat to surrounding neighbors, whether they're public or private landowners or communities. We endeavor to try to find landowners that are willing to invest their own dollars alongside the dollars that we're able to raise with, with grant funds. We've successfully done that literally hundreds of times. We're constantly trying to figure out how to make a dollar worth three or four dollars by getting landowners to step up and take on responsibility to better maintain the land that they own and are responsible for. I think it's a sensitivity that we're all too familiar with, sir, and we recognize that. We, we like to think ourselves as coalition builders who have a keen eye on making sure that the grant dollars that are out there get the maximum impact that they can. And that involves leveraging matching funds that we provide, matching funds from the landowners and building sort of a multi-parcels coalition so that we can make those dollars go as far as possible to improve the overall forest resilience, wildfire resilience of the community, kind of in an extended way. I hope that addresses some of your concerns.
And, and I appreciate your response to my comment because you're right, it wasn't a question. I appreciate your perspective and your philosophy on that. And I, I will remain where I am as well. But I appreciate the work that you do and appreciate your response.
All right. So I don't know who was first.
She was first.
Supervisor Owen.
So is, so are, is the landowner actually chipping in on this project?
They are. And are you speaking about Montesol? Is that the, the main landowner that you're talking about?
I'm talking about the ones in Lake County that you're wanting the support for.
Yeah, Montesol.
Montesol.
Yeah, so we already have the support of the RCD Clerk, these various Fire Safe Councils, Montesol. All of the landowners are contributing matched. In some cases, it's financial. In some cases, it's in-kind and the commitment to maintain the work. We've structured the property such that we're bringing resources to table, to the table and the landowners are also contributing. In some cases, again, that's their staff time and/or a financial. In some cases, again, that's their staff time and/or a financial commitment. And so.
And do you know which it is on this particular one? Are they financially chipping in?
So all of them have a financial commitment at some level.
I'm talking about for the clearing, the work to be done.
Yes, is the answer to your question.
Okay. And then the next is, I would like to see some of this grant money when you're doing private. I don't have a problem so much with you helping private, but the lower income, those that are struggling, is where my heart's going to go. There's a lot of, for instance, Anderson Springs, there's a lot of burnt trees and such in that area. And a lot of the people cannot take care of it, they're lower income, many of them.
Yeah, so the way that we structure these these particular projects, there's a range of different grants that we pursue. The Forest Health Grant is one that essentially CAL FIRE likes to see expanded and extended. So what we endeavor to do is to build a a multi-party sort of coalition to implement the project. In this case, there's, you know, substantial work that's happening in both counties in areas that that impact low-income communities. And so our objective is to do the work and then these become sort of longer legacy projects. So generally, the way these grants work is we go back after we make substantial progress on the implementation. It's a six, six-year grant, so in three years, as we make progress, we're going to go out and look again for funds from CAL FIRE through the Forest Health Grant to extend that further. In general, this whole issue of wildfire resilience and assisting landowners who don't have the means and assisting landowners that do have the means requires a pretty integrated approach. And we have been working on that diligently in Napa and increasingly want to make sure that we're working closely with our partners in other counties. Because fire doesn't really care whether you're in Napa and Sonoma, as we've seen these fire or or lake. You know, these fires can tend to start and they just burn where they're going to burn, where the wind is blowing them or the fuel takes them. So in in general, our philosophy is to reinforce and build strong working relationships with partners in our neighboring counties so that we can help them secure funds, help them develop capacity, leverage funds that we bring to the table and they bring to the table in match so that we can unlock more dollars and help the landowners that need the assistance the most. It is a little bit of a balancing act because in some respects, you can get a large grant. The the grantor, the funders, they want to see that the people that are receiving those benefits have the means to maintain it. And so there's always this sort of tricky balance that we try to strike of working with landowners that have the means and then making sure that we can sort of underwrite or support or in a way subsidize landowners that don't have the means, but get them into a regime where they're getting support to maintain it. Because as we all know with fuel management, you can spend a lot of money to do a lot of work. And if you don't maintain it in two or three years, it's just right back and you literally threw that money away.
Well, what I'm talking about are trees that have prior burnt during the Valley Fire and that are still laying on the ground.
And that's what part of this project is seeks to remediate burned forest land with dead standing or, you know, horizontal fuel regimes.
Right, and and I'm talking about the the lower income communities, so that that cannot financially afford to do it.
Okay, I mean, there are elements of that in this.
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Supervisor Pisca.
So forest health grants are exactly that, for bringing health back to our forests. And and those of us that have very large unincorporated districts, we need to deal with this because there is, and this threatens our communities when a fire gets going in a big forested area or in a watershed. That's important, we we have to assist in the ways that we can for those landowners to learn what needs to be done, get the work done, and then commit to the long-term work. Because it's never going to be done, it needs to be continually treated, as you just pointed out. We do have other programs to help with those 50 by 100-foot lots that you're very concerned about. And in the city of Clear Lake, that is a great program through the Fire Safe Council that we've built out for defensible space. It's run out of money right now, we need to get more money. Supervisor Crandall, or I'm sorry, Chair Crandall and I supported that with our discretionary funds. That helped, I think, 45 people, I think it was 45 homes where people were assisted with those funds from the from the Fire Safe Council, State Fire Safe Council Grant, to get their defensible space done around their home. So there's a lot of different ways that we're supporting people. Low income is definitely on our list, seniors, definitely, people that can't manage their property, whatever size it is. We need to be there to help them because this is going to be, this is something we have to live with. And so the the Forest Health Grants from CAL FIRE specifically are for bringing health back to our forests. And if we have landowners that are interested in doing this work and committed to maintaining, we need to work with them. And that's what this grant does. So I'm, I'm really grateful that you brought this to us and very supportive of this letter.
Thank you Supervisor Pisca. If I could just add one thing about any project that we do and we work closely with our partners on this is we're always trying to seek it to be a model or demonstration project to maximize the sort of impact and influence of the project. You are correct that the CAL FIRE Forest Health money is money that is for large tracts of land and improving forest health, which by extension is a wildfire resilience sort of prescription, so to speak. So this money is not really money that you can use to go do small parcel defensible space. They're looking for fewer landowners who have more acreage, who who ideally are in a means or are in a mix of means to be able to maintain the land. I will add that part of our objective with this is to just reinforce our relationships with our partners in our neighboring counties. Because in a bigger strategic way, we recognize that there's money out there with a prop for that that is coming due. And our objective is to just use our collective will and intentionality, along with those of our partners in neighboring counties, to make sure that we get, and I mean the broader, the unit gets its fair market share of that money coming down the pike. And so anytime we're working on one of these projects where we're developing partnerships, it's with the long view that these solutions require kind of multidisciplinary, integrated work together. And so anytime we can kind of lock arms with our partners in neighboring counties, bring resources to the table, get folks to do the good work, and ultimately then chase the next round of funding, you know, we're in a better position to do that.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll call on you after the supervisors are finished. I have Supervisor Ice Chair Rasmussen and then Supervisor Pisca can go after. And then if there's anything else you want to close with, I'll call on you after they're finished.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Yes, I, I mean, I do appreciate Supervisor Sabate's comments and concerns because I I do believe those are valid in a lot of situations. But on this, and, you know, I look at it from a public safety standpoint and the benefit, I think that we're going to gain out of this in protecting our community and making those lands that are essentially intermingled with all the public land is is an important aspect to be able to put us in the best situation to prevent these fires in the future or at least not have the devastation that we could if we don't do work like this. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add, you had mentioned the priorities of the unit for the LNU. We were not successful, we have not been successful in forest health grants over the last few years. Our unit has barely gotten any CAL FIRE grants. And it's really important that we fix that, that we adhere to the priorities of the unit. And this is what that project does, there's an evacuation route, Highway 29 going over the mountain. That is essential for people to get in and out of our county. And evacuation routes is one of the priorities of the unit. So I really appreciate that it's tied to that as well as hardening the, as well as enforcing around our community of Middletown. So I just want to bring that up because you had mentioned that, it's really important. We have to get back to having, having successful CAL FIRE grants because the last couple of years have been pretty dry for our county.
Were you going to add something else, Ice Chair?
No.
Okay. Okay, so if there's anything you want to close with briefly, or if we're good, I'll open it up to the public.
Just that I appreciate the consideration. I'm also on the Board of the RCD and, you know, we work very closely with our RCD partners here in Napa and with, you know, those extended networks in our neighboring counties. And this is very, very expensive, complicated work. It takes a lot of dogged determination to go chase the money. I've long held that our success is largely dependent on our ability to build close relationships, not just within our respective counties, but across counties. And so we are sort of constantly striving. And I think this is, this particular grant is a good example of our efforts to work closely with our neighbors, help to build capacity, help to bring dollars to our neighboring counties where we can. We've had some success landing forest health grants. We want to work to extend that elsewhere with our neighbors.
All right, thank you. So I'll open it up to the public if there's anyone that would like to comment on this item on the agenda. All right, hearing that, I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve, approve the amend, or this the support for the Napa, Lake County, Napa Private Public.
You're on.
Oh, I don't know why it's, you can't hear it. So I'm going to make a proposal that we approve this.
Second.
So Lloyd?
Would be the motion to approve the letter of support referenced.
The letter of support for the Napa Lake County Private Public Community Based Organization.
And authorize the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, we have five minutes till 12, we have a one o'clock. I wanted to see, I know we have seven points, was it?
Do it.
Seven point five. Or would you, so how do we do this? Do we do that item and then an hour from there? How does everyone feel about that? And we'll be a little behind on the one o'clock, but I think we'll be okay. All right. All right, here we go, I'm just making sure, I don't, I don't. Seven point five, consideration of A, proposed reorganization and renaming of the drought work group, B, establishment of an ad hoc committee, C, transference of a lead agency to community development department, and presentation of SB 552 compliance and project updates. And it looks like we have Director Upadhyay, Angela De Palma Dow, and Shannon Walker Smith. With Community Development Director, Mariaa Turner, on Zoom. Seven point five.
Do we?
All right.
Hello, everyone, it's Pawan Upadhyay, the Water Associate Director for the County.
We also have a contractor from Stantec, Bridget Lowery should be on to answer questions also for this item. And CDD Director Mariaa Turner is on Zoom and then Angela De Palma Dow from Water Resources also.
Yes, so we have this memo in front of us. So I will first give a brief summary and then probably read through this memo. So currently, like, we we need to make a drought residency plan to comply with CNED Bill 552, which is approved by the Governor in September 2021. So what this CNED Bill 552 is basically is for small water suppliers and rural communities, just to make that they have a plan in case of water shortage and drought. So, and for, in order to make this plan, we have received direct technical assistance from the DWR, which is the State Department of Water Resources. And Lake County already has a drought working group or the or a drought task force. So basically, we are asking to transform that drought task force to a Lake County Drought and Water Sortage Task Force. And then, because that's the part of making that plan to comply with CNED Bill 552. So that was kind of a little bit a brief background on what this memo is about. So now I will read through the this memo and then then we can address any questions the Board might have.
Continue.
So the executive summary, in response to the ongoing challenges such as limited water resources, increased demand, climate variability, and recent legislative requirement related to drought and water shortage, staff propose a reorganization of the current current drought work group, renaming it to the Lake County Drought and Water Sortage Task Force, and establishing an ad hoc committee. Additionally, we will discuss the implication of CNED Bill 552 and outline the process for drafting a comprehensive drought residency plan. Update on the transfer of lead agency responsibilities and project timeline will also be provided. The Water Resource Department will present on the following. Reorganization and renaming. The first task is transformation of the existing drought work group into the Lake County Drought and Water Sortage Task Force. Expand the mandate and formal reporting structure to the Board of Supervisors. Item number two is to establish an ad hoc advisory committee. Department formation of an ad hoc committee to handle a specific short-term task. Members will be invited based on their expertise in areas such as water resources management, environmental science, agriculture need, and local community knowledge. The department will select advisory committee members who will hold four meetings with the primary role of developing the drought residency plan in accordance with CNED Bill 552 requirement for state small water system and domestic wells. The ad hoc draft drafted drought residency plan will be reviewed by the task force prior to the submission to the Board of Supervisor for approval and then state certification. Item number three is implication of CNED Bill 552. Overview of CNED Bill 552 requirements for enhanced drought preparedness and resilience. Role of drought and water shortage task force and ad hoc advisory committee in meeting these legislative requirements. Item number four, drafting a drought residency plan. Importance of a comprehensive drought residency plan in response to CNED Bill 552. Process for drafting the plan, including stakeholder involvement, public participation, and the opportunity for the public to review and comment on the draft plan before finalization. Project update, transfer of lead agency and update on the transfer of lead agency responsibility for this initiative. Updated project timeline, a revised timeline outlining major project milestone and expected completion dates.
All right, anything else, sir?
So in addition to a brief summary which I gave before reading this memo, is another major task is like, so right now, is it this thing, this to make this plan is with the water resources, but we are proposing it to be transferred to the Community Development Department. That's because it aligns with the work which they are already doing and their plan for 2050 and the master plan they are doing.
Should we have Mariaa, or you? Director Turner, would you like to? You have your hand up, so I want to make sure.
Yes, thank you. The drought task force has already sort of been briefed on the SB 552 at their last meeting last May. The transference of the community to the Community Development Department would actually be consistent with the local hazard mitigation plan, which which identified the Community Development Department as responsible for preparing the drought resiliency plan. So it's more like we're coming into compliance to transfer it over to community development as well as it'll integrate well with us, with the current Lake County 2050 plan going on right now also. And the the assorted different public outreach efforts that are integrated into this process will also dovetail nicely with Lake County 2050. Bridget Lowery from Stantec is available, should you have any questions specifically about the timeline? Because we are a little behind, but the state did give us an extension. And so Bridget can speak to sort of the process from here. Thank you.
Yes. Did you have anything you wanted to add, ma'am? Okay, Supervisor Spatia, go ahead.
I'm definitely interested in hearing what the timeline might be, and if that is what was intended, I can wait.
There she goes, all right.
Hello, supervisors. Thank you for having me here today. The original timeline in the original CSP, which was scoped last year, was for one year. We've been discussing the process with the Department of Water Resources, and the funding can be continued for one year from the start date, assuming that the start date is relatively soon. And so we will have one year despite the extended timeline.
Thank you. I know that we met with Stantec, I don't even remember what the timeline was, but this sometime last year to review this. So glad this is moving forward. This is definitely something that's been on our minds, because the board had created the task force before the state forced us to create the task force in the first place. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the committee members. I don't see it necessarily identified in there. Maybe it is, and maybe I'm just not reading it. I know it says Water Resources Management, but I'm hoping we get water purveyors that both use well water as well as lake water to better understand their needs, to ensure that they can provide water to the users. And I also don't see fire districts involved who may need to access water at the hardest times to access water, like in October or November when there's no rain. Just ideas of, and also, sorry, I missed one. And, and maybe somebody from like the Chamber of Commerce or some kind of business association that would be able to speak on the behalf of businesses and what that impact might look like when we declare drought, and what kind of changes will occur on water availability and whatnot.
And we do also have the minutes from the last meeting where you and Supervisor Pisca made other suggestions as well, so we'll make sure that we take that into account.
Thank you.
I will also add that the special districts has prepared their drought resiliency plan already, and I believe some of the other water purveyors have as well, particularly for the requirements of 552. It covers state small systems, so those are 14 connections or less. So it doesn't explicitly include the larger water purveyors. They're under either different requirements. And so, yes, we definitely have under the drought task force proposed current member lists and have attended in the past our special districts, department, department heads, and they'll continue to be invited, but just wanted to make that clarification about the requirements with this Senate bill.
All right. If there's no other questions, we'll open it up to the public. Margot, if you can unmute, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Margot Cambara. For efficiency and effectiveness, convening a working drought work group seems obvious and ideal. Having an ad hoc committee draft the drought resiliency plan for task force review requires more volunteers. The schedule calls for the ad hoc committee to meet four times and draft the drought resiliency plan. This does not seem realistic. As for transference of lead agency responsibilities, for optimum operational function, the drought work group should remain with Lake County Water Resources Department, WRD. WRD has the technical expertise required to support the drought work group. Recall that WRD resources also serve Lake County Water Protection District. Better management outcomes result when contractor oversight is done by those with a background in the field of work, specifically water resources. If bandwidth is an issue for WRD, I respectfully suggest that your board consider allocating additional resource or resources to WRD. Technical background in water resources is important to validate the contractor's work results and quality. This will be difficult, if not impossible, for CDD. For this reason, a process handoff to CDD for tasks involving permits seems best. Transference of lead agency responsibilities to CDD is not an action that sets up CDD for success. CDD is on point for Lake County 2050, the effort to update the general plan and local area plans. This project is a huge undertaking with significant impact on the future of Lake County. General Plan and Local Area Plan Advisory Committee members observe that CDD resources are stretched thinly for Lake County 2050 support. Demands on CDD staff over the next two years will increase. Among the outstanding major components of general plan and related efforts include at least four activities. First, year two of general plan, local area plan updates. Second, environmental impact report work for the general plan. Third, housing element, the Housing Action and Implementation Plan update. And fourth, aggregate resources management plan. Director Turner expressed eagerness to work on this project. The timeline is uncertain. CDD's current responsibilities to support the following entities are demanding: the Lake County Planning Commission and the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force. Since starting Lake County 2050, CDD has also been given at least two additional responsibilities: the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program, flood plain mapping responsibility, and role as lead applicant in California Department of Conservation Sustainable Agricultural Lands Conservation Program grant. Unfortunately, a heavy workload can lead to serious errors. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? I'll go ahead and close public comment, and did you want to respond?
Yeah, so, so as far as, we are also asking to make an ad hoc advisory committee, and the water resources would be part of that committee itself. And the members of those, that committee would be based on their expertise, such as water resources management, environmental science, agriculture needs, and local community knowledge. And as far as the heavy lifting on the, making the plan itself, that's what this Stantec is there for as a technical assistance. So it won't be that much direct load on the staff. We do have to do meetings and everything, but most of the work would be done by the ad hoc advisory committee, and it would be brought to the task force for their approval or the review, and then the task force will recommend it to the Board of Supervisor, whether they want to go ahead with it or not. So, yeah, I do see like there is additional, little bit additional work for the CDD in, involved in that, but we would still be part of that. So we are just asking for the lead to be transferred. So I don't see it as saying it would be done by somebody who don't, has an expertise on that, so we are still involved in making the plan itself.
All right, I don't know who's first. Supervisor Owen?
I actually, why is it not saying? Oh. It was legitimate that time. I actually had the same thoughts as Margot with it being, putting more, and I was going to ask both of you how you felt about this, Pon and Maria, putting more on your lap, Maria. I don't know, it just seems like it should be in your ballpark, considering your water, and maybe having her part of the task force, but having, keeping you as the lead just made more sense since it does have to do with water, which is your expertise. So I actually was thinking along the same lines as Margot, and I wanted to get both of your input, because there could be things I'm not seeing here, obviously.
Director Turner, I see your hand up.
Thank you. Yes, this differs a little bit from Water Resources' normal purview in that it deals with wells and small water systems. So when, as you look around the state and the development, typically you'll find lead taken by community development or environmental health, you know, different departments like that, because it's, it's not really talking about water in the lake or the creeks. So we have had extensive discussions internally and are comfortable with taking on this additional responsibility. Shannon is going to head up community outreach or offer support for community outreach in that, and it, you know, community outreach and long-range planning is pretty much what we do. So we are comfortable with assuming the lead in this, and even more comfortable knowing that Water Resources won't desert me. And Stantec has the technical expertise to, to get us to where we need to go on the plan.
Yeah, I was looking to you, both of you, for your expertise to feel, to see how you felt about it.
I can also comment, oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Maria. Thank you for the question too, Margot, and Supervisor Owen. You know, the Watershed Protection District, which is the same staff as Water Resources, does have purview over this plan because it's a county-wide plan, and at least the staff with our director's guidance is not going to abandon community development on this. And just know that we're probably always going to require to have a drought task force requirement from here going out. The specific direction of the ad hoc committee for this year is to be directed at developing the plan, and then they can be directed for other needs, other topics, and other avenues if needed, and at least the staff at the district, Watershed Protection District, will be there to support and provide that if needed.
And one more thing on my questions, I wanted to clear that up first. I'm actually on that committee, and I'm kind of anxious to get some meetings going, to be honest, when we've got the waters, when we need to be doing the planning. And so I'm, I'm kind of anxious. I'd like to see more frequent meetings, to be honest, on this issue.
Yeah, we currently have a website with the agenda from the last meeting from May 31st. That's, we have a drought planning website on, embedded on our website, and we'll make sure and update that. And, you know, the Watershed Protection District facilitates and ministers other committees, such as the Clean Water Program, so we're able to help in that support if needed.
Okay, so more meetings?
Additionally, we were just waiting to bring this item to the board before we launch this, the planning project.
I will specify that the requirements of SB 522 do not have a meeting minimum. So we today are saying we're committed to four, but just know that the state law only requires like one-time meeting.
Well, we just hadn't had any yet, and when you were mentioning me, I'm like, wow, that was a long time ago.
Supervisor Spatia?
We will meet as often as we need to, to get the job done.
I, I just wanted to ask about the establishment of the ad hoc advisory committee. Are you choosing who the individuals are that will be part of that committee? Are you coming back to us for the approval of applications for those who will be part of the committee? Because it's not necessarily perfectly clear. If we approve the ad hoc advisory committee, are we approving the composition of it today as well?
We would appreciate it if that could be an internal process rather than board-appointed. But if you like, we can come back with the categories. They would, it would be the categories that you mentioned, the ones that we've gleaned from the, the past minutes, as well as any other recommendations to fill it out as needed.
County Council?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Chapter 1, Section 6, Rule 2 of the county's policies and procedures related to ad hoc committees, does assign or designate the formation of that, the approval of the formation of an ad hoc committee, either by chair directive or board action, and shall include prescribed duties and memberships of the committee. So one option for your board is to approve the formation of this ad hoc advisory committee, and as part of that motion, direct staff to come back to your board with the composition of the members of, of that ad hoc committee, unless staff already has certain members in mind, some member positions in mind for your board's approval consideration.
Can you clarify if membership has to be like representative of a department or agency, or do we have to provide specific names?
Not specific names. It's really memberships by roles or positions, and that is to be proposed to the Board of Supervisors for review and approval.
And my follow-up to that is, is this a Brown Act compliant committee? Or like, what's this process? I'm just trying to better understand what we're approving of.
This would be a temporary ad hoc committee for a specific purpose, not a standing committee. So it would not be a Brown Act committee, though the whole point is to get public input. So it will be a transparent process with plenty of public outreach.
So pub, public input during the committees, not when it comes back to the board with what the committee has created?
Both.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else to add? All right, so I already closed public input, didn't I? Yeah, I did. Okay, so it looks like we'll move forward with action. Did you have anything else, County Council? No?
I move that we approve the reorganization and renaming of the drought work group to Lake County Drought and Water Shortage Task Force. Can I do them both at the same time? Okay.
I may have some suggested revisions to item B, so it would be.
I second that.
So for A, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Give language for B.
Yes, thank you. So the motion for item B would be to approve the establishment of the drought resiliency plan, ad hoc advisory committee, and direct staff to return it to board with proposed memberships within, membership compositions within that committee.
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
See, approve the transference of lead agency to, from Water Resources to Community Development.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for the presentation and discussion here, and we'll close this item.
Thank you.
All right. So we are at 1220. Any recommendations? We just go from here, or? All right. Yeah, it looks like 120 will be when we come back. So we'll see you then, after the lunch break.
I feel like Water Resources was scared they were gonna be stuck.